Custer County Board of County Commissioners meeting to order. Let the record show that today is January 31st, 2019. Mr. Cando, would you do me the honor, sir, in meeting some of the...
I pledge allegiance...
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Madam Secretary, nice to have you back in the chair.
Good to be back.
Would you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Flower.
Present.
Commissioner Cando.
Here.
Commissioner Prince.
Here.
Attorney Clint Smith.
Present.
And Clerk to the Board, Kelly Camper, present.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yeah, we're beginning to wonder if you were gonna come back. It's too cold to be here.
Yeah. There's only...
The next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes of January 23rd.
I move we approve the amendments of January 23rd.
I'll second that. We've moved and seconded to approve the minutes, January 23rd, discussion. I was somewhat impressed if your minutes were accurate on the spelling of one C dot person.
That would be Brenda.
That's an I. Is it Goch?
Yeah, Brenda.
Yeah, I asked specifically.
Did you?
I didn't even know what he was saying.
G-O-C-H-C-E. I didn't either. I had no idea.
Gosh, I'm sorry about that.
I just, I thought, wow. So, um, there was one other thing I just was gonna compliment you on, and now I probably won't be able to find it. But anyway, I thought they were... All done? Further discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All in favor of approving the minutes of January 23rd, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose nay. The minutes are approved. Audience introductions.
Do you wanna do amendments?
Whoop, I keep blown by that.
Yeah.
Because we really, it shouldn't even be on there, actually.
It's taken off.
Are there any amendments to the agenda?
No.
Well, actually, they can be on there for deletion or corrections. Um, I've got several things, but I'm gonna do them under Commissioner Item. Commissioner Prince, anything?
I have nothing, thank you.
And you said nothing? Okay. We'll move on then to audience introduction. Mr. Nordike.
Art Nordike, Coroner.
Angie Herbert.
I could use this for something.
So nice to have you with us today. Commissioner Items. Commissioner Prince, would you like to begin, sir?
Sure. Since our last board meeting, I attended the Affordable Housing Committee meeting, or actually, the Attainable Housing Committee meeting that was held here. We all met for the Strategic Planning Committee at Tony's Pizza. We had a personnel meeting to interview participants for the Administrative Assistant. And just like I said on the record, I thought we had, we had four candidates. I thought all four candidates were outstanding. It was a very hard decision. I met two different times with Tourism Board members who wanted to discuss several issues with me. Mostly, my answer is, that's an issue you need to take up with your board. I don't know why they, that happens, but it does. Of course, I attended Mary Katnig's funeral. I think that's all I did. There was, I feel like I did a lot more, but I know I, that's all I can think of at the moment.
Okay. Can I, Jay, you said, the interviews for the applicants, you said it was a very hard decision. I want the record to be clear, you did not make a decision, the three of you at that time.
I appreciate that. We did not. What I meant was, when the decision's made, it will be difficult because there were four excellent candidates. Thank you for clarifying that.
Okay, sir. Thank you. I'll just go through my calendar real quick. January 24th, I also attended that Attainable Housing Committee meeting, as well as the Economic Development Strategic Planning Meeting at Tony's, and then the following day down in Wetmore on the 25th, 27th, attended Mary Katnig's funeral. Former clerk, county clerk and recorder. January 27th, I was also part of the four interviews for the Administrative Assistance job. 29th, I attended a Weed Board meeting here in the Commissioner's room, and obviously, today with the BOCC meeting. I may have a conflict this evening, is the Tourism Board's workshop at Tony's Pizza at 5:30.
I'll be there.
Okay, good. Yes, ma'am?
It's at 5 o'clock.
Oh, 5 o'clock.
The train, the train.
They did?
Yeah.
Tourism Board workshop.
So, I'll have to...
At 5.
Get ahold of some people.
That.
So, that's, and I said Tony's Pizza, that's not true. It's at the Roadhouse.
It's at the Roadhouse.
Sorry. My conflict is at Tony's Pizza.
5 o'clock, Tony's Pizza.
Yeah.
Would anybody like to say anything about Tourism Board that's actually got the facts? Would you like to? Do not?
So, is there something happening at Tony's, too?
No. It's a personal commitment, so...
No problem.
So, I may or may not make the, I'll try to be there at 5:30, but I'll probably have to leave, so...
That's a workshop?
Uh, yeah, that's Tourism Board Workshop. And then, I wanna kinda take a hiatus here, just a second. I asked Mr. Nordike to come in. I put this on Commissioner Item so that we wouldn't get into the sunshine law and that problem, but I think we need to have a serious conversation about helping our coroner with his vehicle issues. So, by consent, that's okay, if Mr. Coroner, or Mr. Nordike, Coroner, could speak to us for just a minute during my report, is that okay?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
I had my truck, the pickup down here, and he couldn't fix it, said it's something to do with the security system.
Who he? What was?
Byron Shaw.
Okay.
Byron, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
And I went down to get it, and we thought we'd try and start it right up. So, I took it home, and several times, it started Saturday, when I really needed it bad, it won't start. It just spins. There's something going on. I don't know what's going on. Do you want me to, I guess my question is, you want me to load it up, haul it down to the Ford dealership and see if they can figure out what's wrong with it, or do we need to spend that much money on the thing? I don't know.
How many miles on it, Art?
I, at least 200,000.
What year is it?
200,000.
200,000.
At least, it's the third person that's on it, I think. I think it comes from the Ford service, and then, it's set and idled a lot, you know. Don't motor don't sound very good when it's set there and idle. It clings and clangs and...
Is it diesel or gas?
It's gas.
What year is it?
Do you remember? I'm not sure what year it is.
Yeah, I just, I just feel like we have got to do something. Art got into kind of a sticky situation this last week, and, you know, I can imagine his frustration when he tries to assert the county in a professional manner and goes out to do his job and can't get his stinking pickup started. It's not because the battery's no good, there's something else going on.
There's something else going on. It, it just spins. And if you don't disconnect the battery, it runs the battery down. So, every time you get out, you gotta disconnect the battery.
Just a quick question, Art, that is, just related probably to how we handle this later. If you have a problem like that, it could happen with a new car, and you really need to go, are you able to grab a sheriff's truck or something like that?
You, I have, the biggest, the biggest problem is, I got all kinds of stuff in there I need to take to a scene, to investigate the scene, the body bags, and all kinds of stuff.
Right, I understand. And it's hard to transfer, is that what you're saying?
Certainly, absolutely.
Can I suggest that we authorize Art to take it to Ford dealership, considering the age and the condition of it, has to do with preliminary diagnosis. If it's over a certain amount, I was gonna throw out $1,000. If it's over that, don't fix it, and let's come back to this table and figure out how we can afford to lease the vehicle for Art. This has been an on, Art, you and I have talked about this, I can't, I don't have, for a year now. First, you didn't even have one, and they gave you a hand-me-down junker. The reason they gave you the hand-me-down junker, 'cause it's a hand-me-down junker. It's time to retire, maybe it's time to retire that vehicle. I personally don't feel you should put a bunch of money into it. I think maybe up to $1,000, if they find something minimal to fix.
You haven't moved anything yet?
No.
So, I, I agree. However, though, rather than trying to limit it and having him fix it or not, we got time because the next meeting isn't, when's our next meeting? It's just a week away.
He may not have time.
No, no, but he's got time to take it down there. And that's gonna take, he's gonna have to take it down, and they can get on it to get a diagnostic. That's, that shouldn't take very long. And you oughta have something for us to talk about, so that we can either decide, you know, if they say, well, we need more time to do it, we can, we can do that, and we can think about what it's worth. But 200,000 is a lot. Has it ever been overhauled before? Do we know that? We don't have any records on it? Because if it hasn't, then it's really shot, right?
Well, I, I agree with what you're saying, Bill, but the only reason I said a limit so that if they call and say, look, it's gonna cost $600 to fix, we've already authorized Art to say go for it.
Sure. That's, that's a good thought.
That's, yeah.
If it's a tune-up or something.
We don't know.
You know, and it's...
But we need to know what our agnostic is.
It's, it's wore out.
Well, I wanna speak to the obvious here, number one. I don't have a problem with the plan as it's developing here. I think that's probably reasonable, but I don't know how much more money we should be throwing at a wore-out vehicle when we just, you know, we need to be better. Secondly, I appreciate Art's willingness to haul that pickup down there. I don't like to haul vehicles on trailers. There's a lot of things that can go south. If he does that, then he turns around and eventually has to go back down and get it again, and that's, Art's not in the business to haul vehicles for this county. I know he's willing to do it, and I appreciate that.
Well, thank you.
But I, I think wisdom here prevails, that we probably oughta have it looked at one more time, but I'm willing to pull the plug on and say, you know what? We gotta do something. We, we found the money, thank goodness, to get a vehicle at landfill. I think we're gonna have to probably step up, try to do the same thing for the coroner.
I'll work on some grants. I've got some, Sandy's working on some.
Do you...
So, let's talk about that.
You don't need a brand-new vehicle.
No.
Right? Because you're not in it 100 miles every day.
I would like something four-wheel drive, long-wheel base with a camper shell on it. That's, you know, I get by that. If it had a utility bed on it with a cover on it, it'd be a lot better, but...
So, is our next meeting 6/7 or 5/6? I don't have it on my calendar yet.
February 5th.
I don't have to haul people very often, but sometimes, you gotta do it. That's all there is to it. Yeah, I've got no choice. If it's way up in the hills someplace, it's gonna be done.
We agree with you completely.
Four-door, two-door?
That don't make a whole lot of difference. I, I don't, you know, just something that...
Could you do us another service and maybe start looking around, and see if you can find something? I can call Steve Lindner, see if they've got something down there. We can start poking around. We gotta do something. This is ridiculous.
Well, it's, you know, it didn't used to be too bad when it didn't, you know, last year had around 22 deaths, and, you know, it's, it's changing. And this year, it's starting out again.
We absolutely agree with you, Art. No one is arguing with your point.
I certainly don't want your job, but I don't mind trying to miss your job a little bit. All right, sir. Thank you. Appreciate it. Moving on then, thank you, gentlemen. I know that's a little off-target, but he asked if he could come in and have a quick conversation with us. The other thing that I wanted to bring back to the board is, I had a conversation with the water consultant that I told you I would call and talk to. We've been kinda playing phone tag, but I did speak with him about the possibility of coming up here and having a conversation, or us traveling to Pueblo to have a conversation with him. He said he would go in a situation, coming up here would probably charge us $120 an hour, plus his mileage. He would not charge us clock time to drive. He said, I won't charge you hourly rate to drive up there. He's a consultant, and he's a water engineer, actually, and he's got a consultant business. Now, in all fairness, he also is representing, one of his current clients is Eastern Fremont County, and he's representing them on this water augmentation plan. And he's got another client up here that he's in the process of a case with that person in the valley.
In the valley.
In the valley, and about a water storage facility upon, but my understanding is that that's, I should be careful. He told me who it was, I'm not gonna repeat that name. When he told me, I thought, well, that would be outside of the blue line, but I know that person also owns property inside the blue line, so I better not say, 'cause it would just be conjecture on my part. He didn't think he would have a terribly serious conflict of interest as long as we weren't asking him to be the engineer for us on anything moving forward. And I said, I don't believe that's the case. I think we were just after some education. He thought next week he could make that happen. I wondered about Tuesday, after our board meeting.
Is that not when you already have the thing planned?
Yeah, when we plan an open meeting, that's...
The 6th.
The 6th, which is Wednesday. So, I don't have anything on my calendar for Tuesday.
Tuesday to 6th?
Yes, the 5th.
The 5th, okay. That's okay. 'Cause Tuesday to 6th, we have the Upper Arkansas...
That'd be Wednesday to 6th.
That's Wednesday, correct.
That's when we're meeting with Upper Arkansas.
I'm fine with Tuesday.
So, this would just give us an opportunity to maybe get a little more information, not particularly about the water augmentation plan, but about water in general. That was my conversation with him. He said, you can certainly ask me questions about what water augmentation plans are. He said, I've looked at the, obviously, the proposed aug plan. He said, I just don't wanna get into a, I'm representing you position, 'cause I said I've already got...
You know, we do have an augmentation plan on the books now, and we oughta have him explain what that is, and differently than what we've heard from Upper Arkansas.
Yeah, we have eight augmentation plans in the county.
And I'd just like to remind us that we have already authorized the expenditure of up to $200 that was approved at the last board meeting. So, I'm fine with it.
Is your schedule okay for Tuesday afternoon?
Yeah.
Yeah. Let me call him then today and, and see if I can't set that up. Probably at 2 o'clock, give us a chance to go get a bite to eat after our BOCC meeting. And of course, that would be a workshop, and that would be posted open to the public. So, that being said, then, and I've already said it in public, this gentleman's name is Steve Kastner, K-A-S-T-N-E-R. And I'm gonna say probably, maybe an hour, hour and a half, or...
Sure. Let's, I would say, let's just do it and see how long it takes. Can I ask a question about public input? We have the, I believe, the authority to limit public input, and since we're really trying to get educated for ourselves, would we wanna set some limit on how much public question and answering can go on?
I think you're exactly correct there, sir. It's a workshop for us to get information, so I would say that probably with a rare exception, we'd say, you know, the public is welcome to sit in and observe. It's not a participatory thing. Counselor, you all right with that?
Yeah, that's, certainly.
'Cause we could easily get off onto a rabbit trail. Where's the rabbit? Did you ever, no, I know who took possession of the rabbit.
Who's that?
That would be Sheriff Byerly.
Oh, Byerly got it.
Yes, 'cause he wants to use it in his meeting, which I just went down a rabbit trail, didn't I? But we could easily get off onto, if water stuff goes, we could easily get off onto somebody wanting to talk about their personal water problems.
That's what, that's really what I was alluding to.
And...
Yeah, it's just education, and it's understanding what the current water augmentation plans are here, and what the augmentation options are forward.
Yeah. So, so, by consent, then, I will contact him and move forward with that. I also reached out to AT&amp;T to find out what their start date was on the construction of the AT&amp;T cellphone tower, and they said their target date for start of construction is May 10th, and they expect to be finished by the end of June, which kinda follows their original timeline, but we never did have an exact start date. So, that's the plan as it stands now. So, that's my report, gentlemen. Commissioner Cando?
Yeah, a couple of quick ones. Same with you all, but I was impressed with the interviews that we had for Donna, or for Brenda's position. We'll talk about that later. And the Economic Prosperity Plan has taken up a lot of time, and I'd, I'd like to talk a little bit later on. It's not an item that we need to vote on. Well, it, it might be, we'll, we'll discuss it, but because there's a lot of excitement about participating, and we've got two ways, this, that are, meetings that are participatory. That is, the task force, and the public's invited to that. And the task force is the one that is gonna chew on all the data that we've got, and they would like enough time to make sure they have a, a good meeting to do the good things that we expect them to do. And, and then there's the community meetings with the input from the citizens. So, we are at a point now where we're, where we've got 260 bucks left of the money that we've set aside for administrative and for the consultant. So, I would like to discuss a little later on, probably, the option of getting in and augmenting that, maybe with some community outreach money, if we determine we need to add more than what we were able to do with what we've got. We are adding another meeting, and that is on Monday. You saw it in the papers, or you will see it today and tomorrow, that there is gonna be a meeting for the task, this open citizens meeting. Let me get it up here so I can see it, get up the dates and times right.
I've got a couple of questions for you two.
Okay.
When you're done, don't hurry.
And so, the next meeting's on the 4th, and you heard Cheryl talk about how exciting that will be, because we're discussing the vision for the county based upon the input we've had so far. And that's gonna be at Tony's Pizza, and that, and the big deal there is, it's a change of venue, because we were gonna do it at Ranchers Roost, it's just not big enough. So, we're gonna move it back to Tony's from 5:30 to 7:30 on the 4th, on Monday.
That's for the public?
Yeah.
Okay. That's not a task force meeting?
No. Fourth of February, yeah, Monday.
I don't have it on my calendar.
It's, that's been on the, on her agenda all along, and, but anyway, it's in the paper as well. And the task?
Oh, 5:30?
5:30 to 7:00.
Yeah, I did have it on, I just didn't write down it was Economic Development.
Yeah, it's, so I've been starting to call, and we've determined that it's a call, it's Custer County Economic Development, will be decided, it's really the prosperity plan for the county, strategic vision. So, plan on coming to that, and then, the next meeting, we're, we're gonna add an, an extra task force meeting, because we're swapping one that we're gonna have at the end, and that would be that morning, 'cause she's here already, it saves money. And we'll be having a at Ranchers Roost from 7 to 10 with the task force. And they've already had all the invites, and the public is invited to be there if they wanna listen, and, you know, like we did before.
How did you pick the people that were on the task force?
Got input from everybody, all of us here, and got it added, you know, when we originally discussed it. And she had to limit it to 15. That's how, how the numbers are there. And she, and I, and you, we had the input from you all, too, when we started adding to that.
I believe you guys have a map.
The second date?
And by the way, anybody can come to that task force meeting, too, and are allowed to make some talk, but in the end, it's the task force members that have to discuss it.
And what is the task force? What, what is their responsibility?
Their, their responsibility is to pull together those that agree that this is a good vision, agree, get a consensus, because that's a cross-section, and then present it to us for discussion.
But is that not what the survey does?
Survey does that, and they're taking the survey results to consolidate that vision into a, a statement. You know, it's vision, mission, goals, you gotta get some goals that they agree are encompassing, that encompass all the county.
All right. What was the second date in February?
Okay, the next one's that...
That's the 4th.
4th, 5th, and that next morning.
Oh, the next morning?
Jeez.
Next morning, because she's here.
Yeah, but you have a, you have a commissioner meeting.
At 9.
At 9.
Yeah, but...
Prior to that?
Right, it's, it's from 7 to 10. So, I'll, I'll leave...
So, you guys don't have to leave.
Yeah, I'll leave that meeting.
Where's that at?
It's at Ranchers Roost.
Oh, wow.
That was a...
Is it gonna be a repeat of the one on the 4th?
No, no, no. It's a, it's a task force meeting that's gonna take what they've got started already in discussion, and what the results of that meeting that night on vision, and then, and get them to have the discussion while she's here to help facilitate. And by the way, the task force is free, you know, if they want to talk and discuss things. The problem is not having a facilitator keep them focused, so that's why she's willing to stay and accommodate them.
At 7 o'clock at Ranchers Roost?
Yes, 7 to 10.
And then, on the 4th, that is a community meeting?
The 4th is a community meeting. Remember, she was talking about the big butcher paper with the vision, the artwork.
Cheryl had mentioned, you know, someone being a champion. Is the task force the champions?
Yes.
They are?
Yeah, they, they have to, they're the people that are representing the backgrounds of the county, and they're the people that are going to take and get consensus on what is a good goal they have, to present to the Board of Commissioners in another open discussion.
The 5th is at 7 a.m.?
Before approval.
Is there a remote possibility that the task force would not agree with the results of what the community came up with?
They've taken what the community has taken, no. But they can, they can agree on the priorities and/or not, you know. You know, if, if the consensus are not, it's not, they gotta come to a consensus. There's gonna be disagreement. You can't please everybody all the time, but you can take the ideas, and they're not gonna come up with a new idea that's off the wall that the community hasn't discussed. Remember that, the community is building this plan for them to put together in an orderly fashion.
Okay.
Okay.
So, 4th and the 5th, that's the two meetings in February?
Yes. And, and there's another one on the 11th that's on, in the schedule. You know what I'm gonna, I think that we'll do, we're gonna have to get the, the, I'll redistribute the agenda that she gave us all. You all should have a copy of the whole program that she's proposed.
What we're meeting on the night of the evening?
Looks like this. And so, the next meeting that she's got is on the...
On the 11th?
Yeah.
And what time is that, and where is that?
I don't have it on this sheet here. This is just a sheet of her action. Why don't I get that, and we'll have her put an agenda out of all the meetings that are planned.
Can I interrupt your, in the middle of this, to bring up a topic that I mentioned to Tom the other day that I think maybe we ought to ask about? We have all our agendas that we kind of keep separate, and I should be following what you're doing and whether I-
Yeah, same here, because I've been going-
Wednesday airport meeting, I may or may not know, I probably won't go, but I mean, I'd like to know it's there.
Those are published.
I suggest, yeah, I understand, they're all public meetings. So I suggested to Tom, maybe we could ask Ms. Brenda, or-
It's always on the schedule.
To do a calendar for us, and maybe email to us what all three of us give input as to what we're up to, and then-
That's a great idea.
Administrator says you could send us so we could all see-
Because we're trying to get from each other's calendars in this discussion, all right, so when's the next meeting?
So, maybe, Ms. Brenda, would that be asking a lot for you if we asked you to-
Yeah.
Do a calendar update for all of us?
Well, at one point, we had discussed sharing Outlook calendars between the three of us, so when you have a calendar on your app, on your Outlook.
Well, I use mine, but I use it for my personal stuff too, so I don't care.
Yeah, I'd rather have us get her input.
I mean, that's fine, and I can do that, and you just need to get to me.
Create a Google calendar, give them all access to it.
What I was thinking was that maybe, and obviously, it's only going to be as good as the effort that we three put into it. Maybe submit our weekly calendar items, or for the whole month, doesn't matter, but by like noon on Monday, and then we can generate that and send it back out. Ms. Brenda gave me a desk broader calendar, so I wrote on it yesterday just the stuff that I'm doing. I don't, I didn't take into account the input from you guys, but I end up on the phone, then I, somebody says, well, the 3rd Thursday, well, my planner doesn't have a monthly calendar, so I gotta go through and figure out what the 3rd Thursday is.
Well, you know, in order to, the reason there's three of us, and we have our focus is, is so that you do focus, and, and it is, you know, that, that makes sense.
Well, I thought there was three of us, so you two could agree with what I wanted.
What you wanted.
Maybe that's not the case.
Just because you have the gavel, that doesn't make it wrong.
I might, I might be under a misconception.
So, so that's great, I mean, we, we, we have to be, somebody has to focus to make sure you're keeping things going. And I think it's right, we, we should be aware and, because there may be times I want to hit a weed board meeting, I did hit one, but it was accidentally, you know, on purpose.
And that's my point exactly.
Yeah.
And that's what really started this, Tom told me I had a meet, a weed board meeting earlier this afternoon when I stopped in here for something else, I go, gosh, I would have liked to have gone to that, and I just, for whatever reason, I mean, it's my fault for not knowing about it, but I didn't know about it.
Well, this, a lot of the stuff I go to 2nd Tuesday, 3rd Thursday, well, I don't take the time to memorize that stuff, I write it down, and like I say, if you happen to not get it written down, and 3rd Tuesday comes by and you miss a meeting, it's like, oh my gosh. So I think it's a great idea, we can hammer out the details as we move along here and-
You know, that's, that's true, because what we've been doing, and I've been doing, you start the week, you say, okay, this is tracking all the strategic planning stuff, I'm aware of the meetings that are going to occur, and when it's going to wrap up, and it's my job to let you know, but when I let you know, you've already scheduled something else.
Therein lies the issue.
And so, if you want to be there, you can't, which is, it's not a requirement, but it's a good thing to keep up to date as much as we can and each other keep in.
Okay, so-
All right.
The 11th, there's already something though, right?
Yes. Yeah, so, depends, we're scheduled at the conference room down at Ranchers Roost at 6:30 on the 11th for a water. Commissioners are home.
Yeah, and that won't come, that won't conflict with the task force meeting, which is going to be, I'll have to look and see, I'm not going to say it.
The 11th is a task, task force though, is it?
He thinks it is, sometime.
I thought that was a public one.
I'll look.
Sorry.
Let me, let me, yeah, that's a good point, let me make sure, I'm going to get the actual dates, I've got the bullets here, but I do not have the dates.
Because the public ones should be in the evening.
They are, that's why I was going to say-
That's why the 11th could be an issue, is why I'm just-
It, it could be with that one, yes.
I'm trying to look, look up that schedule, but I'm not going to find that.
Can we three commit to give to Ms. Brenda?
Yeah, I'll, uh-
Give that to Jennifer.
Okay, then as far as board meetings, the air, like airport, they are published, they're, they're the 3rd Thursday of every, of every month, at 10:00. And then there are other boards here, weed board is in a monthly meeting, Tom, you know, we need to get, we need to get Brenda to put those on a calendar, every one of them.
Exactly.
All the board meetings that we attended, and then when we have special meetings like this water court thing, then we need to add.
So the three of us, the three of us will give Brenda information, and then as it just, as it goes, we'll give her updates, and Brenda, would you be pulling up to email it to the three of us, can you do that?
Okay, so let's get back to the original question I asked.
Sorry, I didn't mean to get off on a tangent.
No, I'm glad you did, because we need to strengthen, we need to straighten it out, I'm glad you did. So what I'm proposing, because there is a lot of excitement and, and interest in having an extended time with a facilitator, I would like to be able to use, and we need to discuss, and we want to do that, and we want to do, I don't have to do it today, but I would propose using some outreach money in order to have that in a bucket if we decide to have an additional meeting, if that's what the task force or the community and we decide we need to do.
How much money was, this was one of the questions I wanted to ask you. Out of this grant, how much money was earmarked for administration?
Okay, I'll give you the numbers, I've got them. When we started the process, we had a grant for 26,500 from DOLA, and we had 4,500 from Her, her total bill to us was 29,500.
Okay.
So we've used up part of our input already on that, and then we, and then the advertising, and, and then some of the administrative costs of the first meeting that we've had for drinks and stuff. We've got, of that money, we have $261 left.
Right, I got that, but I was wondering what we started with, I-
Yeah, and we started with 31,000.
31,000, so, right, so we had 1,500, 1,500.
Right.
And we've expended all of that except 261 dollars.
Right, and, and we were able to move on the task force meeting by swapping a meeting out of, back into that schedule, to move a task force meeting up in addition. We don't need that second one more meeting.
I agree.
So, so what I'd like to do, because the task force has asked us for time, and I would like to be able to, at some point, say, all right, we've got 20,000 bucks set aside for competitive community outreach, that's our budget, that's a budget item. And we've used 161 dollars when we entertained somebody from a water court, and Donna, I have to get that from Donna. But of that, I'd like to cap that, let's say, let's set aside 1,500 bucks or so to, for an additional meeting, or 2,000. It's going to cost about 750 to have her stay over, it would cost us more than that to have her come down for a special meeting, so we're going to try to do it in conjunction with the time she's going to be here, so keep it reasonable. We don't need to, we could, don't need to make that decision today, but we can get the input, come up with a proposed additional meeting based on the meetings we have this next week.
So, just, so I conceptualize this, you're asking, you're suggesting, taking an additional 1,500 to 2,000 for community outreach and add it to the strategic plan project?
And actually not add it to it, but I would, I would like to write a check for it as they are needed, in other words, not use 200.
Allocate that-
Allocate that cap.
Up to.
Up to, and say, all right, we're going to have an extra meeting, it's going to cost 750, and then when the time comes, Donna can write a check for that, or Brenda.
Yeah, I'll certainly be a team player here, but I've got a concern, and I might as well voice it. We agreed to match this whole process of 4,500 bucks, now that could easily go to 6,000.
Could.
Or 6,500, or whatever it is, I'm, that's a concern for me. I, I would have liked to have seen us stay within the 1,500 budget, if that's what it was. I get it that we had printing and some stuff with the survey itself.
And that's a good concern, and you always want to manage a program to budget. A plan is only as good as when you start to execute and you react real time. And I, here's my, here's the downside of not doing it, we can hold it, we don't have to do it at all. And we, we run the risk, remember when Cheryl cut everybody off the other day because time ran out? And then we cut it off the next time, and the next time, we run the risk of the perception or the reality of, then the plan's put together, it's presented to us, maybe not complete, and you get the problem with them thinking that the commissioners are going to just make a decision on it.
Well, I know if S-Brand came back and said, oh, I kind of miscalculated, we need another 1,500 bucks, I kind of have a suspicion what our response would be. Sorry, we've already agreed to the dollar figures, and there's a contract.
Right, that's right.
I know we don't have a contract about what you were talking about, but-
Well, you're, you're right, but the difference here is it's our, you can always amend the contract if you agree that's the requirement to change it. You can, you can always, sure want the whoever's, whatever the pro, program is to stay within budget.
Yeah.
So I'm not proposing to bust out the budget, I'm proposing, it's a thing that we can discuss, we can decide, we don't have to do that.
Yeah, you know, we're just, we've had two meetings, and now we've got 260 bucks left out of 1,500, so 1,300 of it was gobbled up in a hurry.
I agree with that. And I think, I think not knowing what our expenses were going into this, running over budget on such an important project, in my opinion, we have money set aside without a, without it being directly earmarked for a specific project, community outreach. I would hate to shortchange this project, we've got 31,000 invested in under 1,500, 2,000 to me, because we didn't understand what the expenditures would be, certainly seemed reasonable to me.
And we've always said, this is not something that we, in the past, they've studied, okay, let's do a quick study, let's do a plan, and it sits there, it doesn't get executed, and they didn't really grab a hold like we have.
This is a different animal, I agree with you. I mean, we didn't just hire someone to come in, ask some questions, and give us a piece of paper that we threw in a cabinet, it's a whole different animal. Not knowing what the cost would be, we suggested maybe 4,500 of our money would cover it, but we're looking at now as maybe as much as 6,500 will cover it. I, I'm not upset with that because projects unknown going in sometimes overrun, and I think it's reasonable. It's, you're not asking for a jillion dollars more.
And I'm not even that, we don't know that we'll actually spend it.
I got it, I'm with you, I'm, I'm not opposed.
I appreciate you bringing it to the forefront now, so we can address it later, okay? Good. Anything else, sir?
Can I just make a comment?
Uh, hold on, just a sec.
You can do it at, at the time.
Do you have any other commissioner items?
Yeah. What was the other thing? Oh, airport, of course, is always, a lot of activity going with OT6, and so we're working transfer of funds. Now, everybody's paid up, OT6 is transferring the money for Cypher this week, we're paid up with Armstrong except for a $3,000 geotech study that they did on the ramp back in November, and they didn't, they knew when they submitted, they weren't going to get it before now, because it hit us during the December cycle, and the budget problems that we have doing that, so that's not an issue. Also, working with Jackie and the board on, on their strategic vision for the, the airport out there. I missed the last meeting, you were there, Tom, it was a good meeting. And things are, things are cooking along. And, and that ought to do me for now, we're going to talk about the personal stuff later.
I think, no, sorry. I was just to follow up, I'm sorry. Do we want to put this as a future agenda item to discuss additional finances for the project?
For the S-Brand?
Uh-huh.
Yes, I think we should.
Yeah, I suppose, look here.
We certainly can't take a vote on it now, but if we-
No, that's why I brought it up, we can discuss it at the next meeting if we want to.
We put on the agenda, then we could make a decision that we allocate, or choose not to.
Sure, and we'll have a little more input based on these next two meetings.
Yeah, why don't we add that under new business on the 5th? A lot of work you shouldn't have.
Yeah.
Big expenses prior to that, huh?
No, no, you'll have the actual agendas with times by then.
Ms. Brenda, I'm adding that to my February 5th agenda. Proposal for additional funding. Fingers aren't working this morning. Additional S-Brand funding, it's not really S-Brand, so let's not do that.
The additional strategic economic prosperity plan. Strat plan.
I just had a proposal for additional funding for a strategic plan.
Thank you.
Right, that's all you need.
On the first item, new business?
A second.
Okay.
Of course, I will be sending agendas.
Okay. Um, I know what I wanted to mention, I think we'll, I'll ask the airport board when they're here for our staff reports, if we can't get an updated financial picture of the airport. I've had people ask me, how much money have we spent, how much money's been spent, what part of that's the county, what's the timelines, and so on and so forth, so I'll-
It's a good idea, nothing wrong with that.
On, when they come in on the 6th, just do that real quick.
Matter of fact, I think they're working on that, because they, their whole cap, you know, their capital investment sit plan has changed based upon the Colorado Department of Transportation Aviation Grants and the OT6 input.
Okay.
That's good. By the way, I forgot to mention, we're going to be working a DOLA grant to, to help offset some of the cost. But it's a small grant, it's 75,000 for all the state. So we're in competition to help offset that cost of construction.
Okay, anything else, gentlemen, on commissioner items?
No.
Commissioner Prince?
I'm not sure whether to bring this up or not at this point, but at our last meeting, we discussed adding Bob Swanson to the tourism board as a ex officio member. The discussion was, since he appears to be an integral part, we would add him as a-
Actual member.
What we would suggest. I mentioned that to Ms. Adams, who sent me a, sent us a request to add him as a actual voting member, so I don't know, I'd like to take that vote today, but it's not actually on the agenda, is that acceptable?
Um, I was just looking, we did not get that on the agenda, let me think about that.
Well, it was on the agenda, and then I was told to take it off because they were going to discuss it tonight at your election.
Who told you to take it off? She doesn't have the power to do that.
Hold on, hold on, hold on, we're not in public debate here, so let's just hold up. Thank you, ma'am, I appreciate that, Ms. Brenda? Yes?
When, at the meeting when you guys said you wanted him ex officio, I made it, I stayed after the meeting to see what procedure was. And in that time, we needed a vote, and we needed to vote at our meeting to make him be a full-time member. And that, so that's why, you know, so, I mean, I asked what the procedure was, so, because I, you know, at the time, I said I was fine if he was ex, or that he was full-time, but you said because we had not voted at a public meeting in regards to that.
So Jay, what was your question?
We agreed that he should be a voting member. My real question was, are we authorized today to make, take that vote, or do we need to put it on?
So was it presented to you, or did it come forward as their recommendation?
It came to me as a recommendation from the chair of that board. And I think we conceptually thought that made sense, we talked about-
Sure, but just, I'm just working procedure now, so the board, did you, did the board-
Here's the procedural question I have, it is not on the agenda.
Correct.
Can we still make the vote?
Thank you, that is the question, everything else is irrelevant at that point.
Absolutely agree.
But, that being said, it is not on the agenda, I will take a comment, yes, ma'am?
So, in bringing to our attention that you would not accept him as ex officio, and the reason we thought we would make him ex officio is because we would be even, and so that's why he was ex officio.
Members of the board.
But now we have an understanding that we want him as a member, he's a, he's a fabulous, valuable person. So a letter was sent out to Brenda, as well as to all the board, to acknowledge that we accept him as a full voting member.
Okay.
Because you guys recommended it, and now we will also try to find a seventh person, so we are on.
And I think part of our discussion was, we were less concerned about odd or even, if it was a tie vote, go back to the drawing board and decide what you're going to do. If it still ends up a tie, it's a no vote, and that's the end of that, that's what-
That's their procedure, they can work however they want.
Exactly, exactly. I'm a little disappointed that it was on here and it was taken back off, I just want to tell you that, I don't think that, who gets it, who has, I mean, just a separate question, who has the right to set the agenda and change the agenda? Who has that right?
You mean?
We do.
Yeah, obviously, there was a little bit of mix-up and some kind of confusion about how the whole process worked. In Angie's defense, I think she said, we can discuss it at our workshop. And I said, okay, that's fine, then we'll wait and do it later.
Yeah.
Go ahead, and then we're moving on, this, we're getting way bogged down.
And I tried having a talk with Deb on Thursday, but basically, it was so we can have a talk, I would have liked if I had a meeting before a public one, so we could have done this, and you guys could have grew to date. So, let's exit the workshop and do a final thing at our public-
Chair will entertain a motion.
I, I move that we put this on the agenda for the next meeting, so that it's on the agenda, we'll take our vote, and we'll decide whether to add Mr. Swanson as a full voting member.
Knowing that it'll be, it has been a formal request from that tourism board, which you need, we already have, we already had that, so.
So, I would like to put it on, I would like to move that we put it on the agenda so that we're not violating it in the-
The move second, we add an agenda item, February 5th, approval of Bob Swanson for a voting member. I don't think we have that officially, but you did send an email, correct?
Yes, to Brenda.
And would you like us to consider that as-
Yes, please.
The tourism board's request to vote him, or to consider him as a full voting member?
Yes, please.
Okay, thank you. Further discussion?
You have another second yet?
Yes, it was.
Pardon me?
There was a second?
Uh, yes, Bill seconded the motion.
Mr. Swanson did come in and talk to me, asked me, what's the difference between ex officio? When I told him, he said, sounds great. ex officio?", when I told him, he said, "Sounds great." So I just want to say that, although he-
He agreed.
Yes, I want to say he agreed, but he didn't come out and say to me, "Thank you for doing this," because we hadn't done it, but this is not something I, you will be opposed to.
And I'm assuming you explained the biggest difference was voting or non-voting?
Absolutely, that's what I talked to him about, I said his voice is important as everybody else's.
Further discussion, gentlemen?
That was the fifth.
Pardon me?
Fifth.
Yes, February the fifth. We'll not have public comment on this item prior to the vote, because it's not a new item of business, so in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose nay. Ms. Brenda, could you add that also, please?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, we, we are getting bogged down, it's 10 o'clock, and we haven't heard Clint, who's going to be very close.
Sure.
Turn your items, we'll move on.
Well, I attended the weed board meeting as a member of the weed board, mostly I've been working on Mark Howard, and at our last meeting, I went publicly with that as far as, since he's filed more complaints against the county, and I have my response prepared to those complaints I'll be filing this week, but I got, it was interesting because I got involved in another matter at the last minute, he has filed complaints against other business entities and nonprofits here, and one of them, nonprofit, Jay's familiar with this, I'm not going to talk about the names or anything, but they had a mediation session coming up, and at the last minute, nobody on the board of directors wanted to actually do the mediation because they were all afraid of Mr. Howard, so I stepped in and handled the mediation for them.
As county attorney or?
No, no, not as county, as private counsel.
Thank you, sorry for the interruption.
Yes, and I don't generally take any private clients, but now and then I'll help out, and I have a friend on the board of directors who asked me if I could do this, and I also learned, by the way, that he's filed another complaint against a major business in this county, and it's the same thing I found out from the information I got preparing for this mediation hearing, is that Mr. Howard never actually filed the job application, but what he does, and this is the same I've seen several times now, he watches the newspapers to see what jobs are posted, and then he claims later on that he filed the job application, although he never does, and claims he was denied because he was discriminated against for the usual things, and in this one, actually, the mediation, and I didn't get the, the way that mediation is handled is by telephone, the mediator just calls and talks to me, and then talks to him over the phone, so I was never had an opportunity to be in the same room with him, or even be on the line with him, and I'm not even sure he knew I was handling it for this nonprofit, but things were agreed on, sort of, and it looked like it was all settled at the very last minute, and he said he wanted economic damages, and I found that very interesting, because it just showed us true colors, what he wanted was a monetary settlement, and of course, that was completely out of the question, so the mediation fell apart, but it's, it just gave me kind of an insight into Mr. Howard, and I've been communicating with Shannon, since he's always, you know, the one who's named in these accusations, and I, Shannon and I are going to get together later today, because I have an idea that I want to run past him, I won't go into the legal details of it, but since we're going on the offensive here, I think I have a, an idea that may really, you know, put Mr. Howard into the spotlight himself for a change, so that's what I've been doing since the last time.
I found it interesting, as soon as we moved forward, the tenor of his emails changed, his whole demeanor, his whole approach seemed like, "Oh, well, wait a minute," so, I thought that was interesting.
It's interesting, I, I mean, I know you're getting some, and I'm getting a couple a day from him, and, but some of the things that he's saying, he's setting himself up that I don't think he realizes what he's doing in this, but I'll be talking to Shannon about it.
These new claims that we've been seeing related.
It's all, the claims are all the same, that he applied and he was denied because of discrimination, because of his, he's really relying heavily on his alleged handicap, his disability, and he also, but he claims age discrimination, religious discrimination-
But he never applies, so how do you-
Well, that's, but he says he did, and that was one other thing, by the way, in talking to the civil rights division, the mediator, they're very aware that Mark Howard just makes, this is a cottage industry for him filing these, and yet, they just accept them, and their attitude is-
They buy them off before, without even worrying about whether it's real or not?
They just, if somebody files a complaint, that it goes into their system and they just treat it-
Like it's real.
Yeah, and that is so aggravating to, you know, the other people I'm working with on this, dealing with this, that they give him this instant credibility, actually sort of aids and abets him in just continuing to do this, and everybody wants somebody else to take some action, and that's why I'm stepping up to the plate finally, because it's not just local here, it's other counties and state agencies that are involved.
That's fraud.
And, well, there's a lot of stuff going on here, but it's, anyway, that's what I'm working on, and I've got a plan, but he's, he files these, and what the mediator told me when I spoke to her was, well, we're kind of aware of it, we sort of think it maybe just lets, gives him a avenue to, where he can let off steam a little bit, well, yeah, that's fine, meanwhile, he disrupts everybody else's lives on this, and I just, I'm very critical of the way the civil rights division handles this and gives him some kind of, in his mind at least, that there's credibility, where they're listening to him, and he's got some merit to his claims, but I'll keep you posted on this.
Good, thank you. Anything else, counsel?
No, that's it.
Thanks, appreciate that. Administrative assistant?
I have nothing.
Your time's running out, you realize that, right?
She's going to unload at the last minute.
She's so short, she reaches up to tie her shoes.
Wednesday is the day.
Yeah, that's exactly right. Public comment?
I just had a comment that I think the person you hired for the economic prosperity planning, well worth her, the investment, the meeting was very well-run, she kept it under control, I just give kudos to whoever found her and that you hired her.
Yeah, we've had a lot of good comments.
Yeah, she was awesome.
She, and she toes the line, and she, she doesn't push it, you know, where there she just makes you do it.
That was a contact through the economic development company?
Yeah, really good.
Thank you. Other public comments?
I need her name.
Okay.
Cheryl Trent. Oh, Debbie Adams.
Oh, name, Debbie Adams.
Debbie Adams, yes. If not, we'll move on, I don't have any unfinished business, Philman?
No, sir.
Okay. We'll move on to new business, public comment, will be allowed for each item that is an actual item that will be voted on by the commissioners. Our first item of business is hiring, the hiring of a new administrative assistant. Obviously, we conducted interviews for that position last week.
Do you want to wait for Dawn?
Yes, I'm going to wait.
Okay.
So, we, Commissioner Canada attended that interview process via the telephone, Commissioner Prince and I sat in on those interviews, as well as our human resource person, Donna Hobbie, and our administrative assistant, Brenda Gady. Ms. Hobbie asked me this morning if we would contact her when we got to this point in the agenda, so Brenda has called her and has invited her to come over. So, I spoke with counsel, and on his recommendation, I would like to handle this as an anonymous discussion at this point, in the event that we happen to have a candidate decline the offer, then we can move forward and obviously not involve a lot of names, not trying to hide anything here, I think we just would be better served in the event things don't go how we hope they would go, but I do need to indicate that it was a little awkward to have this interview process, we did have some discussion about each of the candidates, we did not make a decision, that was left up to the three of us to decide in our own minds prior to this morning, who we felt would be the best fit for the administrative assistant for our county.
How do we do it anonymous? Is it candidate one, two, three?
Right, I had sent out an email to Brenda and Ms. Donna and the three of us, and I just randomly assigned numbers to those individuals, so that they wouldn't happen to be misconstrued as that's the order we interviewed them in, so I just scrambled up the order and sent that. I can find that again if we need to. Ms. Donna, do you have anything to say at this point before we move on? We haven't even had a motion on the floor, we're just, I was just laying out the process.
Yep.
So, with that being said, the discussion-
I'm looking for your numbers, Tom.
Okay.
I had them, but I-
Thank you, ma'am.
There it is.
Did you find them?
No.
If you have the numbers, I'd like to review them to the next program, so I'll make sure I got them.
Okay, all right.
And it's at the top of the circle, because I have two separate, okay, because I did write two separate numbers for my own self.
Yes, thank you. So, Chair would entertain a motion for the hiring of an administrative assistant by number, please.
I'll move that we make an offer within the range of our salary justification that we've approved in the budget for candidate number three.
Okay.
I'll second the motion so we can discuss.
Yeah, thank you. The movement seconded that we authorize, I'm paraphrasing a little, so you grab me if I go off the rails here, that we authorize our human resource director to offer a position of administrative assistant to candidate number three, discussion.
Okay, let me open up, because Jay already opened up a little bit early, but I agree with what Jay said, we had great candidates, they were all good, however, I believe two were outstanding, and so, and candidate three happened to be one of those, and the other was candidate one in my mind, and so, that's a tough decision to make, and there's enough difference between the two, that it's not a black and white, you know, process, so I'm comfortable with three, I don't know how, how do you feel, is there, is it, Jay, is it, but they are close.
I had a terrible time between the two candidates you're discussing, but both of them are absolutely outstanding candidates, and if for some reason the candidate that, whoever we vote for, for some reason does not accept our position, I would be very, very comfortable with the backup person, the one you're discussing right now.
Tom, you can say.
Well, again, it was a difficult decision for myself between candidate number one and candidate number three. I think there were some inherent things with candidate number one that probably swayed me to lean towards candidate number three, as Jay has made the motion to, I don't, I don't know that it's appropriate for me to expound on all of my personal feelings about that, I'm just not sure what's, would be legal and what isn't legal, so I'll refrain from the specifics, but-
Sounds like we're all in the same-
I believe I can support candidate number three, but boy, it wouldn't, wouldn't take much for me to give serious credence to, because they were, they were two outstanding candidates, I can say that.
We were very lucky to be in this position.
Yeah, so, I feel like I can support that. Further discussion, gentlemen? I would add to, for the public's benefit, that Ms. Brenda's resignation takes effect February 14th, so our intent is to hire and bring on the new person in a transitional period up to two weeks, to kind of get that person up to speed, not only with what Ms. Brenda's job is, but Ms. Donna is going to work with this person as well, and so we can have kind of a multifaceted situation here, so originally, I felt like five days was enough, then I was reminded that we were really asking this person to be trained in two positions, part an assistant to Donna, as well as being our administrative assistant, and so then I certainly rethought my position and agreed that maybe up to two weeks would be reasonable, so that's what we're looking at, try to bring this person on early and have some good transitional time. Anything else, Ms. Donna, you want to add?
No, you're absolutely correct, we had really strong candidates, we were really fortunate for some.
Good. Ms. Donna asked this agenda item be put on early, because I think if this motion carries, then your intent is to try to contact that person today, is that correct?
Correct.
And I'm assuming if you do, and you find out, you would let us know, it may happen before the meeting's over, but if it doesn't, that's fine, I mean, but that was your intent, you wanted to jump on that today, if possible.
And I would just like to say for the public that as soon as, if this person accepts, then I think we should immediately make the name public.
I agree, yeah. Okay, further discussion? Public comment? Hearing none, let's see the vote, all in favor of authorizing Ms. Donna to extend the contract to candidate number three, say aye.
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 Point of order.
Yes, sir.
Point of order. This is not a contract position, is it?
No, it's a county employee.
Well, thank you.
I'm just concerned-
It's an out-will contract, technically.
Contract. Yeah, but the connotation normally is if we have someone on the contract, an employment contract's different from an out-will employee, so excuse me for breaking that up, I'm just concerned that that may come back.
It's accepting that person for the position.
For an out-will employee position.
I'm fine with that, I vote yes then.
Opposed? Thank you for that point of order. No problem, we'll revoke, just to make sure, so we're all clear. All in favor of offering an out-will employment position to candidate number three, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose nay? Motion carries, thank you, ma'am.
Right, thanks.
Appreciate it.
Thank you for your help.
Okay, review of vouchers and signing the checks, I've got the hard copies, we've got the electronic copy.
I'll move that we approve the vouchers for January 2019. As presented to us, I saw nothing there, then chucked out.
Okay, thank you, I will, you did second it?
Yes.
The movement seconded to approve the vouchers, discussion. I had a couple of just notes, let me pull that up.
I didn't see any.
I did go and track down a couple of questions that I had, one of those had to deal with the Department of Human Services, I got an adequate answer to my inquiries there, and then, let me go back to my notes. And number four bird is out here wondering why. Is there, I'm thinking that we're going to have to appoint a newspaper rep to-
To feed the birds.
Feed said birds, yes, 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 yes. I noticed that in the entire vouchers here, we were very heavy on the front end of the year because of a lot of the dues, and obviously, most of those are an annual basis, so I think we are kind of tilted rather highly on the front end, but I didn't have anything of any great consternation, so.
Well, just quarterly one bugs me, and that's our assistant.
Yeah, all that bothers me every time I see it, so.
I don't think we can all manage.
So, further discussion? Public comment? Pretty hard to have much comment, we haven't seen the documents, but, oh, thank you.
Let's take our vote.
Thank you.
Well, that was quick.
Hearing none, let's see the vote, all in favor of accepting or approving the vouchers for January 2019, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose nay? Motion carries, we will initial those, give those to Ms. Brenda, and then make them start running those checks for us this morning, so. You guess why I talk about the other things, so, Mrs. Hobbie just came in and indicated that candidate number three was, concur or accepted that position, so I think it's well within the realm, don't you, councilors, that we can make that name public notice, since she has indicated to Donna she would accept the job?
Certainly can.
Okay. Candidate number- Candidate number three was Meredith Nichols.
Ah.
A former part-time employee of the county, so we're very, very excited to have her come on board. She did indicate in her, yeah, in her application that she was available immediately, as I recall. So we'll move forward with that and try to get, get her.
She has a lot of grant experience.
Lot of grant experience.
That's why I was, I was just gonna mention that's a key deal.
Certainly has worked with Ms. Donna.
And has the experience.
In the voucher system. I think she's relatively comfortable in that, so, yeah.
Is that M.E.R.E.D.I.T.H.?
M.E.R.E.D.I.T.H., yeah. Nichols, N.I.C.H.O.L.S. And if you don't know, Meredith spent, I don't know, probably almost a year. Maybe a little more than a year, uh, working in the Office of Emergency Management with Cindy Howard, and had resigned that position a couple of months ago, and. Month ago. So we didn't actually rob her from OEM. Would you, Ms. Brenda? So I'm excited about that, as I know.
That'll be good. The other commissioners are.
Good, good. All right, we'll move on. Highway user tax fund signatures, one Mr. Gary Hyde in the flesh. Good morning, sir. How are you?
Good.
Thanks for your patience.
Man, your hands are always ice.
Isn't that something? They will be in January training. So this one snuck up on me. I got busy doing other things, and they'd like to have this by February first, so.
It has snuck up on you.
Yeah.
It's like now.
And so this is, uh, talk to us a little about this document.
It's a form that we have to send to CDOT annually that just notes any changes or whether or not the highway user tax fund roads remain the same that we're reporting and collecting funds for.
Okay.
So, and they want commissioner's signatures on there.
What is, remains the same mean?
Uh, we didn't add or subtract any roads that we claim to be maintaining.
So we're maintaining everything we told them we were in the past.
Yes. And it's been that way for a number of years.
I'll go through that real quick. Hundred and twenty-seven miles of arterial, hundred, two hundred and thirty-two miles of local streets, three hundred and sixty miles of H U T eligible streets, twenty miles of non-H U T eligible, maintained by other people, and thirteen miles of non-H U T eligible streets that aren't maintained at all. So that's really what the report is.
Correct, yes. That the numbers are the same, so.
And was signing under penalty of perjury. I just read that.
I think everything, I think everything we signed is like that.
That kind of jumps out at you, doesn't it?
Yeah.
Now I'm not gonna commit.
Do you really have those roads or?
But it's in the second degree, which I think is just a hand slap, correct? Oh, no.
Second degree?
Oh, no. It's jail time.
Ask a murderer a second degree.
That's right. Further, or is there a motion?
I move we accept the highway user tax fund request to certify the roads as presented.
Okay, I'll second that. It's been moved and seconded to certify the H U T F signature sheet for that document as the miles been recorded. Discussion. Public comment? Hearing none will proceed to vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Pos nay?
Is that all you need?
Yeah, if I can just get a sign.
We'll just sign the top three and.
Yeah, and date it, and then we'll begin.
Can you get me a copy of that, too?
Sure.
And you can just, you can either get it before I leave, or you can scan it and email it to me.
Okay.
When Ms. Brenda comes back, I'm gonna shoot it. You want hard copy or does it matter?
Email is actually better because then I don't have to.
Or just ask her if she can.
Have another file.
Exactly. I'll just do that. I'll scan it and email it to you.
Okay.
You wanna just ask Ms. Brenda before you leave to scan it and email it?
Sure.
Then you won't have to.
While we're waiting on that, I want to make a public announcement that the complaints about Gary's road work is, is getting less and less all the time as he's doing better and better. And, and actually, I have gotten a lot of comments on, especially during the snow season. It's been hard because it's been a lot more snow than we're used to in the last few years. So good work, Gary. Thanks.
Thank you.
Anything else, sir?
No, that's it.
I've got some questions for you, but I'll wait until the staff reports next week.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I may shoot those questions to you ahead of time so you can respond.
Roger, tell you, Gary, that County Road two seventy-four, he actually answered.
Probably as good as anything.
They did plow that road.
Oh, really?
Yeah. It was a mistake because of new, new people.
And I was out there yesterday and I talked to the folks.
You did? Good.
If there's any objections, Chair's gonna move to take a five-minute recess. And gentlemen, I would request that we honor the five-minute thing, okay? Any problems with that?
No problem.
Meeting will come back to order. One minute extra. One minute too long, but you gentlemen did well.
We were here.
Yep. We'll move on then. Thank you. Tourism Board Budget Revision is the next item of business. Mr. Ellison, we're welcome.
Good morning, Ben.
Yeah, you may approach.
That's right. How are you, sir?
Good morning, sir.
I win your granted.
Real nice.
I don't know. Typically following, you may approach. There's a big old smiling handshake all the way around.
Not always. No, that's good. The reason I'm here, I'm pass, we can pass this around. I appreciate it, is that when we did the budget last year in October, we, we decided to take a very conservative estimate because we didn't know what the receipts, if they would follow the same pattern. So I'm here to go back to roughly what we were at before we revised downwards. And I'll show you all the details, but I want to set the context first. And I know you've seen the, the new budget. But on the twelfth, we approved a budget of fifty-four K. Receipts came in at twenty thousand. That's forty-eight percent of the budget, and it was right what I thought it would, or at least I should say that was according to the normal pattern. We have a bond, a balance forward of eighty thousand. And just a little factoid I thought you'd be interested in, based upon the actual receipts for last year of the tourism tax, it means the county drag-along sales tax was sixty-two thousand.
Okay, your term drag-along?
Mm-hmm. So that means when you pay tourism tax, it pulls in sales tax you wouldn't otherwise get.
Okay.
Got it. So what we're doing, the, I just liked, was managed to the clock, the cash flow tool that you saw before, and I don't know if you want to dive into that, but I have it if you want to. But the, the salient point is, the way I'm looking at this, and this assumes that we get some funding in or supplement our tourism tax receipt with at least one grant from the state. We could, that would be seventy-five hundred dollars. We think we'll do much better than that. But, but, but what this cash flow shows us is we don't go below thirty-five thousand. But I'm, I'm saying, given the timing for things like media buys and things might be front-end loaded a little bit more versus we're making, I mean, making a commitment to the board never to let the balance go below thirty thousand, which is about seventy-five percent of what the annual receipts coming in are. We're measuring the advertising activities monthly. That means we're providing, and we're, and we're, we're front-end loading that or timing the, the electronic advertising based upon when we think people are planning, and that's very easily dialable. And we've got fabulous reports coming back from the test that we did in, in December and early January. We're getting double-digit click-through rates, which is absolutely unheard of. So that's really bodes well for, for the summer, and, and we didn't spend that much money. Any questions on that? That's kind of a technical term, but you're probably.
Early PPC.
Paper clicks.
Pardon?
Paper clicks. So it's one thing, it's, uh, the Vista Works we're working with on the web and marketing, they work with a lot of other county tourism boards in, uh, the real, uh, the Fremont County, let's call it. They're used to two percent paper click rates.
Say that again.
Pay per click.
Pay per click.
Not paper.
Yeah, pay per click.
Okay.
For each click.
For each time that they went to the.
Yeah, and really, I ought to use click-through rates, T, CTR. I actually use those. It's the concept of paper click. That's how, how we fund the budget, and we can fund that on a daily basis or a monthly basis. And once that budget's gone, then it's, it's gone, and we can, you know, target that how we want. But the click-through rates are ten percent. Yeah, or over ten percent.
Is this a statistic that is independent, or is this from Vista Works their own? Could it be skewed?
No, absolutely not, because, I mean, it's, it's Google, it's Google, it's Google Analytics.
Okay, so it's an independent, it's not our paid.
No, and, I mean, no, no.
Where does that information come from? Who tracks that?
Uh, Google. And then, I mean, what Vista Works does is, and we're glad to show you that, the reports, but we're now getting a month report showing the activities and measurements that we've in, in place, put in place towards the end of the year.
From?
It, well, so Vista Works is getting information from Google Analytics and for what's on our website. And then that comes together in a report that gives us the overall.
So Vista Works is providing you the report?
Yes, but eight, most of the content is coming directly from Google Analytics.
Got it.
Yeah. So, uh, I mentioned travel planning and what our goals are. I mean, absolute commitment is five percent growth, but we expect ten percent growth in tourism as measured by the tourism tax.
Let's talk about that tourism tax for a minute. You're not talking about lodging tax here.
Yeah, lodging tax.
All right, that's what it's called, lodging tax.
Right.
Okay. Got it?
Yeah. Yeah.
Because tourism goes way beyond lodging tax, correct?
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, I should've said lodging. Okay, so what are the changes? Adding back the variable, mostly the advertising that we pulled out because we wanted to see what the receipts were, and basically, we're adding back what we received plus a little bit more, so we're adding back twenty, twenty-three thousand. And so, I think what you want to go to, if you don't have a copy of it, is the, is the budget. Obviously, I have a lot of backup.
Before you do that, just main statement you said, eighteen, twenty-eighteen tourism taxes for the fourth quarter was, was what?
Twenty thousand.
It was twenty grand, and you expected twenty thousand.
Right.
That wasn't included in your estimate when you built the budget in the first place? That's what you're implying?
Well, it was in the budget we proposed the first day we went before you, but, but because of receipts up to then, we're only about twenty thousand. So we didn't want to, collectively, we decided not to assume that it would do.
So you're expecting that? For, that is the forty-eight percent of the total. It's what you're expecting this year, too, in the fourth quarter?
Yes, yes. And so I have, we have those in the cash flow tool. We're using the same.
Okay.
Seasonality, month-by-month allocation to estimate when, when that, when that cash will come in.
Okay, so, all right, so what then is the twenty-three K additional based on that you think you're gonna get?
It's based upon what came in Q four.
Well, you said that was already known.
It was already known, but you guys, you, but we collectively decided to assume it wouldn't come in and have a more conservative budget, and you asked me to come back if it came in as we projected. Does that make sense?
Sort of. I didn't remember it being, it's being throttled down, but.
Yeah, we did.
Oh, yeah.
We came back.
Okay.
Ms. Brenda?
Yes.
If I can, just, Charlie, could you call Donna and ask her if she can? I've got a question, just for clarification. You said on October the twelfth, the Board of Commissioners approved the twenty-nineteen budget. I don't believe that's accurate. I think that was December. We didn't do budgets in October. We did a preliminary, yes.
That was last time I met with you.
This is approved the twenty-nineteen budget, so technically, it would have been December when we approved that budget. Can't give you that exact date, but it certainly could look. But anyway, I just think we need to correct that to December, we approved the twenty-nineteen budget.
Okay. I was, I was referring when we met.
It was the preliminary budget you presented.
Right.
All right.
Okay.
Charlie, you have a fund balance as of the end of the year of eighty thousand dollars. I also remember, and I can't, I pulled it back up, I'm not sticking my finger right out, but I know you do allocate some money to nonprofits from your budget to help them with, is in the vein of tourism, it helps the county. If I remember, it was a very small, I tried to find it, and I'm not sticking my finger, like five percent. I mean, it was very low.
Well, what we, what we.
Ten percent? Can, we can say ten.
So what I'm trying to say is, um, I think it's wonderful to have a fund balance, but the object of all of this is to get the money working for all of us. Is the plan maybe to get that money out, use it?
That's, that's, I, amen, yeah.
So you carried eighty K over. That's a lot. That's a whole year's budget.
Yeah, it's two years' budget.
Well, hey, the new budget, they're, they're.
Get this money on the sixty thousand a year.
That's, I, I agree. You're talking to the car.
I'm not telling your, 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 the Tourism Board how to allocate, but as a commissioner, I hate to see a big fund balance unless, I mean, road and bridge is a different story. We don't know if a giant snowstorm's coming. I mean, if something happens, great. I mean, a bunch of tourists come in, you'll make more money.
Yeah.
I want, I personally would like to recommend to your board that get this money out there, however you.
The way I look at it, we have a fiduciary responsibility to invest it wisely and get it out of the account.
Perfect.
Right.
The, good.
That's the reason I'm here.
I'll just leave that with.
That's the reason I'm here.
Thank you.
So according to our approved twenty-nineteen budget, your ending balance, if I read this correctly, was in, was forty-seven thousand, seven hundred and nineteen dollars. Then I'm assuming you took this additional twenty thousand from Q four receipts and added to that?
Well, I was working off the fund balance versus the budget balance. I know we underspent by about seven thousand, the budget last year.
Okay.
So I'd have, I'm not sure the difference between the budget file and the actual fund balance. I'm glad Donna's here.
Because the budget is zero-based, so no matter what you've had left or you started with, it's always zero. You're starting fresh every year. Whatever is left over or overspent either is subtracted or added to your fund balance. You are talking fund balance, he is talking budgeted, so they, they will not be the same on there.
Right, right.
Okay, that brings up an interesting question. I think that's true. If you thought you had eighty thousand dollars in a fund balance, not the same, it doesn't exist.
There is eighty thousand.
Because it's in, it's in, it's in the general fund.
It, it's in the tourism fund.
Okay, all right, that's why I wanted to make sure, because he's.
Well, she said it's a zero-based.
When you say zero.
But it goes to, it refers to their fund balance.
Okay, all right, makes sense.
They do have a fund balance.
And it's restricted funds.
I just wanted to make sure.
So I can't go out by a pool table for the county.
That's right. Has to be spout on tourism.
That's right, that's right.
So to me, here's the point of question, is why do you want to have a budget increase in January when you're sitting on eighty thousand dollars currently?
Well, what I'm trying.
I can see this if you were upside down, if you were in the hole.
Well, I, I mean, to me, when you're managing your business, you want the budget to match reality. So if we have an artificially low budget based upon assumption that Q four receipts didn't come in, then you have a budget that doesn't match the, the reality, then we just, in my mind, kind of ignore the budget because it's not real. So what I'm trying to do is true up the budget so it matches and is reflective of what the fund is, and quite frankly, the tools that we have to execute now. So I'm just trying to get the budget to.
Let me try what Tom said, so I, he's got a good point. You know you have money in the bank.
Yeah.
You got a budget you put together based upon how you thought you were spending things. You can spend the money you have in the bank and still keep the same budget process that you've set up. I mean, you know, if you, if you, oh, Jay brought up the point. You could spend forty K right now and give it to each of the nonprofits of you, because it's, it's a tourist, right now and give it to each of the nonprofits, because it's, it's a, all of them will help tourism, in my view, and most of them, I think all of them do. So that would necessitate a redo of your whole budget that we've approved already, that you're gonna be, you're planning to do things orderly too. I mean, you can come to us and say, we wanna spend, you know, the 40K on X, could be anything that you think is right, and it is important to spend the money, not keep it and build a bank account for tourism. Right? I mean, so what are you asking to do? You know, you have a budget.
I'm trying, really, it's more, I think, for your peace of mind than for ours, we're trying to make the budget match what we plan on executing, and what we're planning on executing is based upon the real receipts, not the ultra-conservative, not what the fund was back then.
That's why we want you in here like everybody else, every month, to tell us what you're doing. I mean, that's fine. You know, you know you have that reserve in the bank, and if you're gonna spend it on something, whether it would be something that you planned to do, and now you've got, you can increase it with a new project or whatever. So I'm not quite sure what you're asking.
Let me take a minute and allow Ms. Donna to comment.
First and foremost, that fund balance may or may not be exact, because when the auditors come, they will remove probably 20 grand of your first quarter that was deposited in 2018 that actually was 2017 revenues. So we do not actually know your exact fund balance. We do not.
We're in arrears.
We are in arrears because the auditories have not come until May or June. So when they did the ultra-conservative, which is absolutely how I feel they should do, they were basing it upon thinking that that first quarter would go away, and we don't know what was going to come in. We don't still know what was going to come in for your last quarter of 2018, because it's not been deposited yet from the state. This is only January 31st.
No, but I have, I have the receipt, we had 19,000 that came in in November.
But you, or your last quarter, see, you, you're not, you don't have your last quarter of the state.
You've got November, but you don't have.
No, 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 I'm talking about, I'm talking, no, I'm talking about what county received in November and what went into the fund in November. That was 19,000.
Okay, but that would've been the third quarter.
Third quarter, not fourth.
Right, but I'm talking about what we, alright, it's really.
Right now, my books say you have the 80,000. That's not to mean that if your fourth quarter does not come in, and your fourth quarter last year was huge, that it could not be.
But I thought, I thought we were doing a cash accrual, so if it comes in as cash in November, then, and then I'm putting in November, I'm accounting that as Q4, because that's a Q4 receipt.
Correct, but, but we have not accounted for.
The total, yeah.
The first quarter or the last quarter of 2017 was deposited in 18. You have that money, it's sitting in your bank until the auditors reclassify it back.
It's gonna be deducted, go back to 17's books. Let me take another comment or question.
Go ahead. So I think Charlie's intention is that we do feel that we're going to have a very proactive year as far as promoting West Cliff, Silver Cliff, and Custer County. So are you saying if we keep our budget as we proposed at the 54,000, that in May, when things are clarified as to how much money we have, can we revisit our budget? And so for the second half of the year, then we look at our budget, and then we can spend what we need to spend or want to spend?
Certainly makes sense.
Yes.
Well, yeah, I don't look at this budget as a spending a limit on you, right? I mean, you submitted this in good faith in December, or October initially revised and came back in December. I don't think that means that you can't spend one dime over 54,800. I think the Commissioners are saying, number one, I agree about the 80,000 carryover, I would like to see that down around what your annual.
See, we wouldn't wanna approve an $80,000 project right now. I'm betting that if you really got 80,000, Donna's saying, but we, you could come to us in May, and you'll know more exactly what that real balance is at that time, for that point in time. And, or even before that, you could come back and say, I've got a 19,000 project, we're gonna put in a ski lift or something. Cheap.
Well, and you may change your mind of something you had proposed to do, that you said, you know, that was 10,000, and it's no longer on the table, we're putting that 10 toward the different project. I mean, it ends and flows, and it's just revising the budget, and you come to the Commissioners, and they okay it or they don't.
And that fulfills our, our job as Commissioners, we do, are accountable for how you spend that money, period. And that's why it's important that we understand what they are, and we're making sure that you're not putting yourself in a, some shady loan deal with somebody, betting on the come, you know, that, that we're gonna get this big windfall. So, and I don't think we have that worry, I mean, I have a lot of confidence in what I see you doing, Charlie. You're taking a lot of extra time here to actually work out the budget, and you guys are gonna try to your best to make sure that you're spending all the money the best you can, I believe.
Well, I gotta clarify, because what Donna was saying totally confuses me. If we, because I realize that the timing of the quarter that people are paying sales taxes, there's a delay in that quarter, like for example, the Q4, you pay in January. But the reality is, what we have in our fund balance isn't going to go away. We're just going to receive, so what I'm calling as Q4 is what we received in cash in Q4, even though the timing of the activity of the tourist activity, lodging tax, was a month to three months before.
Correct, but the Commissioners base the year on what you bring in. Most of the time, budgets do not exceed what they bring in. Not to say that you cannot, but that is their prerogative. If you were gonna bring in 60, you could spend exactly 60, but if you had a downflow and they had let your fund balance be down to zero, then, then.
Well, right, and so what this budget does is, actually, the lowest the cash flow goes is about 35,000, which is 80% of what came in last year. It would probably be 75, or.
That's your revised budget, or the one that you.
That's revised, that's revised. And so, so what, so I just, I mean, I'm just a little confused in terms of, we have cash, we have more cash because for several years, we've been building up a reserve. It actually, I think, will prove to be very wise to have done that, because we invested a great platform that we, now we can measure things like click-through rates and all those things. Use Google Analytics and really take advantage of it. So now we're ready to load the gun, to use the analogy that we had of the website, with the ammunition, which is the advertising to do it. And so, that's what we plan on doing, and, you know, we're just kinda catching up with this fund, and yet keeping a minimum balance that is substantially, when you, when you look at the year coming up, and you add what's, what's, the fund balance is and what will come in next year, you're looking at 132,000. We're talking about spending about half of that.
And absolutely, and so when you do that, it is a supplemental budget, because you are going into the fund balance to supplement those projects.
Yeah, I see that your request here is to increase your budget by 44%, up to, by a 23,000 increase. So I would feel much better about this whole conversation if it was happening in May, June, or July. I think to come back to do a revised budget, nothing wrong with that from your standpoint, but from our standpoint now, we're talking about a whole new process, not that it couldn't happen, but I think it's a little premature.
Right, because I need to have an offsetting entry for that expense to go into there. It's, we just don't say, tourism wants to spend money on something, and I don't have an offsetting entry. I will pull it out of the fund balance, and I would place it into that account.
I mean, our fund balance is currently.
Yeah, and.
Or the general fund, I'm sorry.
And you would know what our, the tourism fund balance is at that time, if they felt it was going to be below what the threshold, I mean, it just is.
But the tourism fund balance is 80,000, correct?
Yes, and what if you had no money come in this year? What if we had a fire? That's, that's.
Take your words back.
Let me, let me propose something.
No, but that's what I'm saying, you can't always depend on what's starting to happen. That's why they, they're conservative.
Mr. Cannon, go ahead.
Yeah, let me propose this, Charlie. You, I think it would be good if you take time, get with Donna, I would also get Sam Donardo involved a little bit, so he understands what we're up against legally, you know, and how they do the books, like, like we're saying. And that doesn't preclude, and then, like we said, in May, we can revisit anything we want. Actually, we can revisit it sooner than that, if there's, for some reason, because we know there is a reserve, it may be, whatever it is, it's X right now, the exact amount, that we can, have you propose anything during the course of the year that you would like to go ahead and try to do, that reasonable? And in fact, we would always wanna know, because we wouldn't want you advertising something that, that from a county point of view would be against the county values, blah, 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 our responsibility to spend the money wisely, et cetera, we're just making sure you're doing what you said you're gonna do. So I would, you're gonna be able to spend, and we want you to spend every dime in that given year, so that the taxpayers were using that money wisely. So, and all of it if we can, but all of it doesn't, you know, is bounded by some of the regulations and the process and the procedures that we have to follow. And I think it would be great if you could get with Donna and understand a little more from our point of view.
So from my perspective is that if, if we don't, if we don't, I mean, very poor use of funds, if we don't load the gun with the ammo, which is the variable advertising, we've got a platform that's consuming about, well, I don't wanna pull out the numbers of it. So if what we do is, we dial back down and to pull back out the advertising, then we're totally ineffective.
Why would you have to do that? Because you can reallocate money internally that you think you're gonna do later on if it doesn't happen.
Because it all goes back down to your fixed costs versus your variable costs. We have a platform that about, the platform that we have, by the time you look at all the things we have to do just to keep the doors open, is about 25 to 30,000. Now, to use that, you've got to have the ammo, which is the advertising, otherwise, you've got to rescale to a whole different thing. It's kinda like, we got the big truck, we're not gonna put the cargo in it, we're gonna run the diesel, we're gonna run the big truck and pay the taxes on it, buy the tires, but they're not gonna put the cargo, the advertising, into the truck, and we've just totally blown the scale of what we plan to do.
We're gonna move along, I'm gonna take a couple more comments. My perception is you have a fund balance of 80, 80 grand. Some of that we know is gonna come out. You have a budget of 54,000, so that's 134,800. If you guys can't function on that, we got a serious problem. I understand, you came in here wanting to align the budget with what's going on in your account, I understand that. That's really what you're after.
Yeah.
Correct?
Yep.
I get that. So I don't want you to sit there and go, I never understood what the hell I was even asking for. I heard you initially say you wanted to align the budget to what's going on on the ground.
Right.
I get that, yes, ma'am.
Yeah, and again, what Charlie's saying in the advertising, well, we had to pull back and do more conservative with you, which we presented in December. There were advertising projects that we then put on hold, and with this, this new budget, proposed budget, this allows us to expand our advertising areas that we did put on hold.
See, and I don't agree with that, I hate to interrupt you, but I need to stop you right there. How does it limit you doing anything? You got 134,000!
Because we have a budget of 54.
The budget doesn't dictate what happens, it was an estimate.
Well, they'll do our job then.
I interrupted, just go ahead and finish, but I just take exception to that, I don't see how you can say that.
Well, basically, because we do have a budget, we're trying to stay within those guidelines of what that budget's set.
Okay, that's different.
But you had the flexibility to change that internally.
Let's say Road and Bridge, we had 50 feet of snow. Okay, they've only budgeted 30,000 in fuel, obviously, that is not going to cut it. So they've used the extra fuel, and when it comes to the time when the fund is running down, we do a supplemental out of the fund balance, and we cut that.
Right, if you wanted that way, that's fine.
That's just how they track it, that's why you need to understand how it's done.
We're only here because you asked us, once we knew what Q4 came in.
That was gonna be my other follow-up, because you're doing exactly what we asked. Let's find out what happens.
You're in, you're there.
Go ahead, and then we're gonna move on.
Yeah, I actually don't see a problem to keep the budget as we have it, because really, not much happens in West Cliff the first half of the year, and then it really kicks in. And you're saying that by May, we're going to have a much better idea of what we actually have.
But let's say you had an advertising thing that was 30,000, it was the greatest thing ever.
Yes.
Come to the Commissioners, you guys would be okay to spend it, I would use those two as the offsetting entry, and they would be okay.
See, that's what we care about, David. Listen, you know, you got a budget, you allocated in buckets, and that doesn't mean you have to spend it in that bucket. If you need to spend more in there, you move it out of that bucket of yours and put it here. You're not coming to us to say, give me more money from the outside world because we screwed up. You're managing your money internally, and that's what we wanna make, see you doing.
Well, however, however, two comments I wanna make, and I'll shut up. One is, no money is coming out of that 80,000. It's not gonna disappear and go back to the state, correct?
That's right.
Right, it's your fund balance, correct?
Because you just, Tom, you said some of it's gonna come out. That's not true.
No, what that meant is, it comes out because of a bookkeeping to make sure that we put it in 17 where it was, and what the actual numbers were, see.
It's your balance.
That money's always there, whatever it is.
It could go from 18 to 19, or whatever, but it's still there, the cash.
The number's the same.
Well, it will be until we get Q4 of 17.
Yeah, it could be more, because 17 didn't use as much. Whatever, whatever happened, but that money stays in the county, doesn't go to the state, doesn't go somewhere.
Right, stays in our fund. Yeah, the other point is, what I'm trying to avoid, what I'm trying to avoid is having to sell the back of my truck, because, you know, or take off the wheels, not put the, or not put any gas, because then we can't carry our advertising.
You're good. You just make sure they advertise, that's your job as a manager, do it.
Alright, we'll go do it, we'll go execute.
You have done just exactly what we asked. I would've assumed we would've known by Q4 of 17 what was going on, we don't yet, so that's cool. So I don't think any, any harm, any foul.
Right, you guys are doing what you're supposed to be doing.
So I, at this point, I can't support doing a supplemental budget. That's where I'm at. Doesn't mean we can't have this conversation again in three, four, or five months, or whatever, but.
Well, we're gonna go execute.
Yep.
And if you guys want us to come talk about a supplemental budget, that's fine. And we'll, we won't go below a fund balance of 35,000.
Well, you're managing, you can go below whatever you want, just go, you're a manager.
What they've indicated that that's.
That's what you do, great.
Got it.
Okay.
But the bottom line is, on a budget revision or a supplemental budget, Commissioners okay that.
Pardon me?
On a budget, a revised budget, and a supplemental, it is a board approval.
Right, right.
Which is what you were here today looking for.
Hey, got it, off-the-wall question, has not related to the budget. What's lava research?
That is Amy, that does all the web administration.
Oh, it is? I didn't know that was her name.
Thank you, gentlemen. I appreciate your time. I'm assuming you're not leaving, because we got more tourism, isn't it?
Right, 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 right.
Oh, we're not done with these guys.
The next item on the, next item on the agenda is the tourism bylaws. Ms. Adams, you presenting that, or?
I wasn't prepared to, I thought Peggy was going to be here.
Okay, that's fine.
I am familiar with the revised bylaws.
No, I don't wanna do it unless you're ready.
You guys have the red line, correct? So I spent a lot of time on it.
Yes.
Are there any questions?
We have your boldened copy, or the copy of your bolded suggestions.
I mean, I could, I could sit up here and.
That's fine, you're welcome, yeah.
Good morning.
Good morning.
How are you?
Good morning.
Yeah, I think kind of an overarching conversation first, so we can set the stage, and then we can get into the...
Yeah, because we would like to cross it off our list.
Yeah, and my board packet, one of those, one of the number I'm getting ready to tell you is my, you know, I had six tourism bylaw documents in my board packet today.
I had no idea what I'm...
So certainly that lends to some kind of bleary-eyed confusion. But I tried to boil that down to the draft,
It says amended by...
Peggy Collins and Charlie Ellison version. That's what I took as the last version.
In January.
That was January 29th. So that's what I worked from. I kind of disregarded everything other than the original bylaws, which are right here.
Yes.
Your recommendations for, in bold, so that's what I operated from. That's all I can speak to that.
I don't think I got that version emailed.
The bold one, okay. I can send that to you right now if you'd like.
I don't really...
Memory's short.
Short timer.
And I don't, I can't tell you, because I've dropped it into my board packet, I can't tell you who sent that to me, whether it was you, Tourism, Brenda, Peggy, I don't know. But anyway, I could go back and look, but I don't think it's critical to know that. So just know that any of my comments were referenced, really, using the original set of bylaws, the recommendations in bold, that it says bylaws draft with Charlie's recommendations, but I assume Peggy Collins must have had something, because her initials were on that. So, that's why I'm not saying Charlie's recommendations, just the recommendations made in bold. And then I certainly have some questions that I have based on those two documents, the original and this bold. So that's where I'm coming from.
We'll do the best we can.
Okay.
Of six weeks' memory lapse on it.
Yep. Obviously, there's some clerical things in here, but there's some other questions that I had. So if you want to deal with those, we can. If you want to wait until Peggy's here, I guess it would be up to you guys. I don't have any hard comments.
No, let's try dealing with your...
I know that you, jump in, gentlemen, just given my perceptions, I know that you guys took a knife to these and took a lot of the BOCC involvement out. I'm not saying I'm against that necessarily. I just know that that's kind of the, was the result from the originals to this. Go ahead, sir, you have a comment?
The one that I went through, the cockpit I went through, I have no idea if it's the latest one or one of the iterations that came up to that. The ones that my comments are, I personally would like to throw all the ones I have out and send me what the one you need me to do.
Yeah, I want to take a timeout.
Because I am not, I am confused.
Because, same thing.
I have some issues that I think probably germane to all of them. I don't even want to say issues, questions mostly.
And I have an issue too.
But I'm not sure I'm even looking at the right one.
Okay, so let me say one thing about the bylaws that confused us, is that we have the old bylaws, and then Peggy created the new bylaws. And I believe what she submitted, then you wanted it redlined, and then that got confusing. So the question is, can we just send you the document as we have edited without worrying about a red line?
No, here's what, let me recommend something here.
Yes, please.
This is discussion.
Yes.
I'm concerned, I want to know that it's a board position, first of all. You guys took it, voted, and Peggy's good with it, blah, blah, blah. She's not even here.
Yes.
And also, when you do revisions,
Yes.
you start off with a master copy, and it's one that's called a gold key. It's your, it's the one you work off of. And every time you change it, you need to put Rev. 1, Rev. 2, Rev. 3. And then that way, we know when we're shot down a lot of things, Tom sees Rev. 1, is that the latest one? And I say, "I got a Rev. 2 here." But you guys have control of that document. And then, then we can talk about specific issues, whether you've taken it out and why. And if it's a big deal, then I think the board of commissioners needs to see and have time to talk about it, rather than in five minutes trying to get through something here that's wanting us to approve of board bylaws. So we're not ready to do that.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, to answer your question from my perspective, you said, "Can we just give you our new document?" The answer to me, for me, is no. Because if you give me a document that does not specifically indicate, typically in red lettering, what the change was, then I have to go back and compare and research. It's more of a courtesy than anything. I'd have to go back to these original documents. I don't even know what document at that point you would have used to revise, see? Just a second, let me finish my thought, and then I'll get to you. So, let's say that you gave us a recommended set of bylaws, without any red lines in it, then I don't know if you wrote that and revised that from your original set of bylaws or from anything else. I mean, it's just hard to track. So that was why I would say, no, I wouldn't accept that. I prefer to go back somewhere to a document and say, "We're going to redline it, truly insert the red words in there," so we can say, "Oh, okay, you did not want it to say, 'Shall not receive any compensation.'"
You've got it struck out, and you've got the new words in red. Peggy did that, obviously.
No, not to us, she never did.
No, 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 what I mean is, she did do that physically, but then when you stitch it together as a blank document, we don't know what phrases or what words were omitted or added.
Go ahead, Ms. Brenda.
Okay, part of the problem we had was that the only version of bylaws we had was a hard copy. And I scanned it in as a PDF file, and then I converted it to a Word doc, which...
Could be right.
Yeah, and it was in Word 16, which Peggy didn't have Word 16, she had Word 10, so then the redline comparison would not work.
Okay. The bolded thing made more sense, but it never really referenced back to all of the original changes. That was, so I started trying to research, say, "Okay, I know what they want. What did it say? What are they trying to change? What's the philosophy behind that change? What's the purpose?" Did you have a comment, Angie, or no?
No, I was just going to, because I knew it was Peggy's.
So really, it's, the original document, I believe, was last from 2012. So we're going from 2012, and then you want a redlined version that has 2012, plus the additions of what we want to add for 2019.
Which are in red, either struck out with the new words written in the end.
Okay.
That's how it works.
Yeah, yeah, I think there was definitely a lot of confusion because of formatting and things like that. Because I know I've seen a redlined document, but...
That was what I consider the current, existing set of bylaws.
And Brenda, that would have been what you scanned as 2012?
Yes.
And...
Hear me clearly when I say, this document that I was looking at, thousand times better than this document.
Yeah, okay, I'll let Peggy know that.
Way better.
I'll let Peggy know that.
But it could even be better than that, right?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Because we don't want to see stuffs.
So I just want to throw this out, because if I don't tell you what I went through, which I thought was my job, and if I don't tell you that now, then you're going to come back, and then I'm going to say, "Well, I have these concerns, questions, whatever, that I had a month ago, but I didn't bring those to you." So I just want to throw those out real quick. And if you want to make notes, Article 3, Part D, the wording is this, "One or more ex officio members may be recommended and appointed on an annual basis." My question on recommended and appointed was by whom? Okay, so we need to clear that up. Who's going to recommend those?
I was under the impression that we recommend and you appoint.
And so I'm just, we don't have to answer. I'm just throwing these out that you can consider, and you can go through that. Part F, same section, or same article, sorry, Article 3, Part F. The last sentence in Part F, I redlined. It says, "Shall be extended for up to three months at the Tourism Board's discretion." We're talking about what happens if there's a replacement person. I put, "At the BOCC or the Tourism Board's discretion." I don't know about that, just something to think about.
But am I correct that the protocol is that the Tourism Board recommends and the BOCC appoints, based on our recommendation, but you can say yay or no? So we never, the Tourism Board does not appoint?
Okay, so let me read the whole sentence. "In the event no letters of interest are submitted or no submissions are deemed qualified, the term of expiring member shall be extended for up to three months." Got that. At the Tourism Board's discretion.
Okay.
My question is, is it at the Tourism Board's discretion or BOCC or the Tourism Board's? Because eventually, we're going to have to do that. Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, could I make a recommendation? Since we have multiple copies, I have five of them.
Do we want to start over, just start over?
Yes, that's where I'm going to go. How about rather than, keep your changes, because I think they're very valid, but can we get two copies?
Yes.
A clean one and a redline one?
Yes.
The redline one is the changing of the old one, and then without the red lines in it, so we could just see what it will look like as a complete document.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay.
And then let's look at those, because those are going to be the same. One's going to have a little line through it, red change, and the other one's, the red line's gone, and the change is there, you know, where you put it, except all revisions. Okay? And then let's, then let's us three go through it again and make my changes. Because I have changes also, but I'm not sure I'm even going to connect the right one.
Right, right, okay.
So I would like to get us all on the same page, if I may, please. And then let's have this conversation, work through this.
So, can you give me a timeline as far as when you want it to be on the agenda again, and that's what we'll work with?
We haven't decided about whether we're going to put it on any agenda, so we're... You had a comment, or?
Same thing. I pointed out before, get the red lines.
Start over.
Start over with, this is the gold copy is the one that you've gotten made the changes to. We can see the strikeout, we can see the new words in red. And then when, of course, word works the way it works, so you can pull the red out, and you've got the complete document that Jay mentioned.
Yeah, can we, since we're volunteers, we don't have latest software, and we bring our current one, give it to someone in the county that will then create the red line from through.
No, you guys are writing a set of bylaws, they're your bylaws.
Yeah, no, we'll be able to do it.
You can make the change and show us the change you made from that original 2012 doc. That's all we care about.
But what I'm saying is, we asked Peggy to do that. She couldn't do it because of version control.
I'll help her.
So... We're not going to put that on our administrative assistant.
Yeah, no, I'll help her, I'll help her.
Well, let me, go ahead, and then I will...
Debbie will do it, that's cool.
Yeah, no, it can be done, and Peggy volunteered, because I had it like 60%.
Okay, so we'll just start over.
Words correctly here, because I'm telling you, I've got some serious frustration going on. I went through and redlined the stuff that I was concerned about as a commissioner. I've got three hours into this document, trying to compare to that document and another document of the bold. I get where Commissioner Prince is coming. I'm not going to sit here and watch a bunch of heads shaking and discouragement on the Tourism Board, "Why in the hell are we doing this again?" I've got a gut full of this. Now, if I will concede to do that, hold my concerns, but know that we're going to sit right here and do this again, for the umpteenth time, and whenever that comes to the commissioners again. You with me?
And I think we all understand, though, that change of anything can be very difficult. And so, you know, Peggy did take this on, and she has revised more than one set of bylaws. So if her, if her software is not up to date, I am happy to take it on and give you what you request.
And Tom, the other piece is, because I have the same concern you do, but my change, we may not agree with either.
Exactly.
So we've got to make sure, you're making a comment on something that is relevant to what they've got. So I'm all for, I'm sorry you're going to have to take the time to get us a real copy.
I've got nothing but time.
And Tom, it's easy, won't be easy, but hopefully, you'll be able to pull your red lines and take a look, so you don't have to reinvent a wheel by comparing the two. And you just take what you got, did they cover your concern or not?
So let me just clarify, so, because we're going to start somewhat over, but you want to see the old document, 2012. And then in that 2012 document, you want to see what we're adding in red and what we're taking out, strike through.
Yes.
Okay, got it.
Easy to do, using review.
Yes.
Review?
MS Word.
I'm a Mac person, but I'll...
Debbie, you use the time, let's get it, I've done it many times.
Can I speak? If you use track changes, it will do exactly what I'm asking.
Oh.
It's simple.
Okay.
It is.
Okay.
And the third change is put in blue, so if you want to check, if you want to track it down, you can.
Okay. No, it is frustrating, because it's frustrating to us too. Fortunately, the bylaws are not like a top priority, but they are a priority to cross it off our list of things to do.
Right, that's fine. So we don't need to talk about it today?
No, we're good.
Well, I disagree.
Oh.
That is your opinion.
My opinion.
What, Mr. Flower?
So I say, we aren't going to talk about it anymore to agree, I have an issue with it.
As my husband always says, "Does he have a mouse in his pocket?"
The frustration level for me is as high as probably as it is for anyone else. We'll discuss this till we get it right, and we come to some kind of conclusion. How you get there is none of my concern. My concern is this, that just know, I was prepared to go through these changes today. That's not happening, I can live with that, okay? But again, know that when you bring a copy, it's not going to be right. Because I will have some suggestions and changes that I probably won't vote to adopt it until those changes are in there. That's all I am saying. That is it.
With what you just said, would it be helpful, as we create this fresh document for review, that you do give us your input before we change it?
Nope, because that's his opinion, just like he is.
Okay, okay, all right. I was just clarifying.
We have to discuss, we need to discuss in public what you're going to give us.
Okay, okay.
That's why I didn't forward this document on, and say, "These are my suggestions."
You can't do that.
Yes, no, okay, I get it. We're starting over, ignore everything that you have received, and we're going to give you a strike through and a redline document that hopefully will be approved before our audit in May.
Now, that is probably the best information that's come out of this whole thing, is if we can delete all these other things and start over.
Yes, yes, well, yes, please do.
I had six of them.
I grant you permission to do so.
The interesting part is, I read all six of them. I changed at least two or three, and I stopped. I said, "This isn't the same." I don't even know if I'm working on the same ones as you are, you are.
It's a difficult, it's a difficult task. That's why you don't want to do it too often. But, and you know, I think the whole reason the bylaws had to be updated was because of the change of a commissioner not serving on the Tourism Board. That's what generated the change.
That's part of it, sure.
Yes, 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 yes.
That was one deletion.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
But you know, and it isn't a hard process. This is great, that's what we're supposed to be doing.
Yes.
Talking about it in public.
Yes.
I mean, this represents the philosophy behind the Tourism Board. If you want us to vote in favor of that philosophy, obviously, we have to agree with that.
Sure, sure. At least two, at least two of you do, I believe. Yes.
Two thirds, yes. And that being said, I certainly can have a conversation about when you guys would like to come back to the commissioners.
I'm going to talk to Peggy first.
Okay.
Okay.
So you...
Probably a month.
Yeah, probably a month.
Reasonable, you contact the administrative assistant. She'll ask me to put it on the agenda, or whoever happens to be in the office, and that's where we'll go.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
See you tonight.
Iron that out.
I look forward to February 4th, too.
We have one more strike.
What?
Two strikes or?
Yeah, anything else you want to bring up?
Get the heck out of here, where you can.
Actually, what was your first strike? The budget, but your, the first strike was Bob Swanson, so you made him.
They got three things in here.
That's the difference, I can say something, here's the difference between the other boards, you're coming here with change to make it better, you're working on it, I can't tell you how much I appreciate that. I mean, there's a lot of boards out there that just kind of mope along forever, you're working on it to get it right, and I appreciate that, and I'm sorry we made it frustrating for you, and we make you do more work, but that's because we all want to get it right, so thank you.
And there's a very nice letter to the editor in the Tribune, which I hope will appear in the Sentinel as well, about the tourism board.
Not English, were.
Yeah.
Good news.
No, I know, I know.
I imagine it'll be in there.
Okay, we'll move on, next item, transfer of funds, Ms. Kelly? Do you want to have a go at it?
I will do my best.
So twenty-two thousand nine hundred and four dollars.
No. Two thousand nine hundred.
What did I just say?
Twenty-four.
Twenty-two thousand. I want that.
Will you take twenty-two?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, two thousand nine hundred.
Two thousand nine hundred and four.
Four dollars.
From the recording surcharge fund to county general, and what this is, is it's paying for storage of all of those books that we have and stuff.
I thought you had hard copy of that.
That's an ongoing project, right?
Yes.
You have a soft copy of that.
Okay.
You don't have to sign it.
Okay.
I'll go ahead and.
This is just for the clerk.
We don't need to sign it.
No.
Go ahead, Jim.
I move that we approve the transfer of two thousand nine hundred and four dollars from the recording surcharge fund to the county general fund.
I second.
We're moving to second, the transfer of two thousand nine hundred and four dollars from the recording surcharge fund to the general fund, discussion?
Okay, it's an I-county storage and access fee, is that what that is?
Mm-hmm.
Pretty steep.
I-County is what, they're the program that, like, title companies and realtors and all that, they get on there and they look at all our documents online, and so that's what's stored online.
I see.
Yeah, I did a little informal research, speaking with Ms. Camper and Mrs. Trahill about why we're doing this, and there's no signature line on here, we never really come to any clear.
I know, I was actually going to bring that up, if you thought about that anymore.
Yeah, I didn't, obviously, this document, Kelly's going to sign that, but my question was, well, if you're signing and we're not, then why are we even dealing with it? We didn't come up with an answer, really, so.
Except it's a transfer of funds, which we care about.
Right.
And I told Tom, it's because it's been done this way forever, but that doesn't mean that it's right, or that it can't be changed, but my thought was that I could talk to a couple of the other clerks and see how they handle it, and see if there's a different way, a better way, if everybody does it this way, or.
We're just authorizing her.
And Virginia's perspective was, regardless, there's going to be a record of it in the minutes, and we will eventually sign the minutes, so.
Right, and that's kind of what I was saying yesterday, is this is a kind of a take out of the minutes, just to let Virginia know that she needs to transfer this one.
Yeah, I don't have a problem.
Further discussion, public comment, Terry Nunn will proceed to vote on favor of approving the two thousand nine hundred and four dollar transfer, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, Jose, motion Terry, obviously, Carrie will sign her document, and she'll deal with that, so.
Do it, thanks.
You got to round do it.
So now you got to go print it again, right?
No, she's got it, why did it?
Just do it.
Do it.
Okay, next item, business ordinance pertaining to regulating marijuana in Custer County Resolution Number 1901.
Ordinance.
Ordinance, thank you. Counsel, want to lead us off?
Should we start with the motion, and then we'll?
Um, yeah, I would guess that would be the correct procedure, and then we'll come back.
So, so how did the motion, how did the ordinance evolve in the first place, to be here before us today? Is that a?
It was a first reading.
First read? Ah, okay.
So I do the second reading, and there's a motion, whether or not to adopt.
So, do we need the reading first?
Right.
So we're ready for the second reading of the proposed ordinance 19-01.
And if it's accepted, then it's, comes along.
You got to read the whole thing.
What was the, I do, what was the date of the first reading? Was it December 31?
Seems like it, yes, I can double check.
I need to put that in.
I think that was.
It sounds right.
Oh, this is ordinance 2013. I'm going to start reading, and when we get there, I'll put that in unless you let me know anyways.
I actually thought it was the 23rd.
It was the 31st.
Was it?
Okay. All right, ordinance number 19-01, an ordinance of Custer County, a political subdivision of the state of Colorado, regulating residential growing, cultivating, and processing of marijuana in the unincorporated areas of said county, whereas section 14, sections 14 and 16 of Article 20, or 18 of the Constitution of the State of Colorado, Amendments 20 and 64 respectively, authorize persons to grow limited amounts of marijuana or to assist others in growing marijuana, and whereas Amendment 20 granted to local governments the general authority to prohibit commercial marijuana operations, and whereas with the adoption of ordinance number 13-01 on September 5, 2013, by the Board of County Commissioners for Custer County, the Board, commercial marijuana operations were prohibited within the unincorporated areas of Custer County, and whereas neither Amendment 20 nor Amendment 64 permit local governments to deny individuals the constitutional right to engage in non-commercial unlicensed grow operations, and... That was the first reading?
Yes.
Okay. And whereas regulations of the state of Colorado pertaining to commercial marijuana operations are generally not directed toward non-commercial unlicensed individual grow operations, and whereas this circumstance has resulted in a proliferation of non-licensed and unregulated marijuana grow operations in Custer County that present significant health and public safety concerns, with multiple violations of the Custer County zoning resolution, and also violations of electrical, mechanical, plumbing, and fire codes that are enforced for the unincorporated areas of the county, and whereas Section 30-11-101, Paragraph 2, CRS gives the Board the authority to adopt and enforce ordinances regarding health, safety, and welfare issues, and to provide penalties for the violation of same, and whereas the Board is further authorized pursuant to Section 25-1.5-106, parentheses, 13.5, parentheses, CRS, to regulate the growing of marijuana, commercial or otherwise, and whereas the Board is further authorized pursuant to Section 9-7-113, CRS, to ban the use of compressed flammable gas in the extraction of THC or other cannabinoids in a residential setting, and whereas the Board has determined that the adoption of regulations governing the growing, cultivating, and processing of marijuana in a residential setting is necessary and desirable for the health, safety, and welfare of the citizens of Custer County, and whereas this ordinance number 19-01 does not unreasonably impair or impede the exercise of constitutional rights afforded citizens under Amendments 20 and 64, now therefore be it ordained by the Board of County Commissioners of Custer County, a political subdivision of the state of Colorado, as follows, Part 1, Section 1, Scope of Ordinance and Authority. This ordinance number 19-01 applies within the unincorporated areas of Custer County and regulates the growing, cultivating, and processing of marijuana on any lot, parcel, or tract of land by any person, including but not limited to patients, primary caregivers, or persons engaging in such conduct for personal use. Section 2, Definitions. The definitions contained in Amendment 20 to the Colorado Constitution, the Colorado Medical Marijuana Code, the Colorado Medical Marijuana Program, and any regulations promulgated by the Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment and the Colorado Department of Revenue, as amended from time to time, are incorporated into this ordinance number 19-01 by reference, including but not limited to definitions of marijuana, medical marijuana, patient, and primary caregiver. All other applicable definitions are as slated herein. So Paragraph A, accessory structure means a subordinate structure detached from but located on the same lot, parcel, or tract of land as the primary residence, the use of which is incidental and accessory to that of the primary residence. So Paragraph B, accessory use means a use incidental to and subordinate to the primary residence. So Paragraph C, primary residence means a resident or a person by custom and practice makes his or her principal domicile an address, and to which the person intends to return following any temporary absence, such as a vacation. Residence is evidenced by actual daily physical presence, occupancy, and use on a regular basis for domestic purposes, such as but not limited to slumber, preparation and partaking of meals, regular mail delivery, vehicle registration, or water and utility billing. A person shall have only one primary residence. So Paragraph D, primary use means the main use of a structure or land as distinguished from an accessory use. Section 3, growing, cultivating, and processing of marijuana, so Paragraph 8, marijuana may only be grown, cultivated, or processed as an accessory use at the primary residence of the person engaging in such activity, and only one for such person's own consumption and use, or two, if the person is acting as a primary caregiver, then for the consumption and use of that person's patient, or patients. So Paragraph B, marijuana may only be grown, cultivated, or processed in a primary residence where residential use is the primary use of the structure, or in an accessory structure to the primary residence on the same property. So Paragraph C, the space used for the growing, cultivating, or processing of marijuana, whether in a primary residence or an accessory structure, shall be limited to a contiguous 1,000 cubic foot volume. So Paragraph D, the use of an accessory structure for the growing, cultivating, or processing of marijuana shall only be permitted on a lot, parcel, or tract of land that is one acre in size or greater. So Paragraph E, marijuana shall not be grown, cultivated, or processed in more than one structure on any single lot, parcel, or tract of land. So Paragraph F, marijuana shall not be grown, cultivated, or processed within the common areas of a multifamily or attached residential development. So Paragraph G, any area used for the growing, cultivating, or processing of marijuana shall be fully enclosed and locked, ensuring accessibility only by the person growing, cultivating, or processing the marijuana for personal use or for medical use, and to prevent access by children, visitors, casual passersby, or anyone not authorized to possess marijuana. So Paragraph H, any area used for the growing, cultivating, or processing of marijuana shall comply with all applicable land use codes, building codes, and fire codes, including plumbing, electrical, and mechanical regulations and requirements. So Paragraph I, non-residential buildings or structures that are not accessory to a primary residence shall not be used for the growing, cultivating, or processing of marijuana. So Paragraph J, marijuana shall not be grown, cultivated, or processed outdoors. Section 4, marijuana plant limits. At any given time, no more than 12 marijuana plants in any stage of maturity may be grown, cultivated, or processed in a primary residence, or in an accessory structure on a single lot, parcel, or tract of land, regardless of how many persons 21 years of age or older may occupy said primary residence. This limitation, which is based on Section 18-18-406, so, or parentheses 3A, Level Numeral 2, Capital A, CRS, supersedes the statutory provision that grants to each person 20 years, 21 years of age or older, the right to grow six marijuana plants for personal use, and also supersedes the statutory provision that grants to a primary caregiver the right to grow more than 12 plants for his or her patients. Section 5, use of compressed flammable gas products or flammable liquids. No compressed flammable gas, parentheses, for example, butane, parentheses, or flammable liquid may be used in the growing, cultivating, or processing of marijuana. For purposes of this section, flammable liquid means a liquid that has a flash point below 100 degrees Fahrenheit, and includes all forms of alcohol and ethanol. Section 6, marijuana activities shall not be perceptible. The growing, cultivating, or processing of marijuana shall not be perceptible from the exterior of the structure in which such activities occur, including but not limited to, so Paragraph A, common visual observations, so Paragraph B, light pollution, glare, or brightness that disturbs the repose of another, so Paragraph C, undue vehicular or foot traffic, including unusually heavy parking in the immediate vicinity of the primary residence. Section 7, smell or odor. The smell or odor of marijuana growing, being cultivated, or being processed in a primary residence, or in an accessory structure, shall not be detectable by a person with a normal sense of smell from any adjoining lot, parcel, tract of land, public right-of-way, or building unit. Section 8, rental property. Any lessee or tenant who uses a rental property in whole or in part for growing, cultivating, or processing marijuana shall obtain written notarized permission from the property owner prior to commencing such use. Part 2, Section 1, Administration and Enforcement. The Custer County Sheriff shall be responsible for the administration and enforcement of this ordinance number 19-01. Section 2, Penalty for Violations. Any person who violates any provision of this ordinance number 19-01 after its effective date commits a Class 2 petty offense pursuant to Section 30-15-402, parentheses, 1, CRS, and upon conviction thereof, shall be punished by a fine of not more than $1,000 for each separate violation, plus a surcharge of $10 pursuant to Section 30-15-402, parentheses, 2, CRS. Each day during which such violation exists shall be deemed a separate offense. Section 3, Penalty Assessment Procedure. The penalty assessment procedure set forth in Section 16-2-201, CRS, shall be followed by law enforcement officers charged with enforcement of this ordinance. Pursuant to the penalty assessment procedure, the violator may, in lieu of going to court, choose to pay a fine in the amount of $1,000, plus a $10 surcharge for a violation of any provision of this ordinance. If the penalty assessment procedure is declined by an alleged violator, who chooses instead to appear in the county court for Custer County, and who is ultimately convicted of a violation of this ordinance in said court, then customary court costs may be assessed in violation, or, excuse me, in addition to the fine. Section 4, Disposition of Fines. All fines and surcharges assessed for violations of this ordinance shall be paid to the treasurer of Custer County. Section 5, Additional Remedies. The remedies provided in this ordinance shall be cumulative, and in addition to any other federal, state, or local remedy, criminal or civil, which may be available. Section 6, Severability. Should any section, clause, sentence, or part of this ordinance, ordinance be adjudged by any court of competent jurisdiction to be unconstitutional or invalid, the same shall not affect, impair, or invalidate the ordinance as a whole or any part thereof other than the part so declared to be unconstitutional or invalid. Section 7, Safety Clause. The Board of County Commissioners for Custer County hereby finds, determines, and declares that this ordinance number 19-01 is necessary for the immediate preservation of the public health, welfare, and safety. Section 8, Effective Date. In order to preserve the immediate health and safety of the residents and citizens of Custer County, this ordinance number 19-01 shall take effect immediately upon its adoption on second and final reading as provided in Section 30-15-405, CRS. Introduced, read, and adopted on first reading on the 5th day of December 2018, and ordered published in the Wet Mountain Tribune, and then lined, and the commissioner signed that, I believe, on December 5th, and it was attested to by the county clerk and recorder on that date. Adopted on second and final reading on the 31st day of January 2019, and ordered published by reference to title only in the Wet Mountain Tribune, and lines for the commissioners to sign, and for the clerk and recorder to attest, so, the first reading, it was December 5, then, is that correct?
Actually, it wasn't, because I was looking for the ordinance, and it said 1901, but that was the ordinance for tampering.
It was 1801.
We thought it was going to be 1901, and then it ended up being 18.
So was it December 31?
We never did first read.
Yeah, we, no, this is the second reading.
No, it isn't.
Yes, it is, I guarantee you, we have had him read this prior to.
No, I had, no, no, on the 23rd of this month, at the meeting on the 23rd, he stated it was finished, and on the 31st would be the first reading.
Yeah, I don't have anything in my Menetone.
I frankly, reading, I don't recall reading it again.
I may be confused with him reading the last second reading of the tampering one.
That was adopted the 31st.
Yes.
All right, and that's my, because, all right. All right, and that's my, this, cause, all right, sorry. So, the correction is, this is the first reading on the 31st day of December 2019, and ordered published in the Wet Mountain Tribune. And if it's acceptable to the Board of County Commissioners, and you can vote on it, then it will need to be published in its entirety, and we'll have a second reading on another date for final adoption.
So, first reading, 31st day.
Yes.
Of June.
Of January.
January.
Sorry, I, I sat here the whole time you were reading, going, I know, we've done that, but it was.
Well, it didn't sound familiar when I started reading it.
It was the.
Some questions came up in my mind, too, that I would have asked if I had heard this before.
I have a question.
So I do have a couple.
Is there a statutory time limit between the first and the second reading?
It's, is it two weeks, I think? There is a statutory time limit, so I believe it has to be published twice, as I recall. I'd have to go back to look, but I would recommend.
Yeah, you were talking about that during the last ordinance, and I was thinking it was two weeks.
I think it's two weeks, but I.
It's a minimum, there's, is there a maximum time?
Um.
Like, could be three months between readings?
You know, I, there's no, I haven't seen any maximum time in the statute, but my, my suggestion would be that we just put it on the agenda the end of February for a second reading, and have it published twice.
Yeah, it gives it plenty of time.
By consent, Ms. Brenda, then, gentlemen, no objections? Put it on the February 28th agenda, second reading.
Let's, uh, how do we, how do we make sure that what we hear here? Who wrote it?
I did.
You did. This is the first time it's been in our hands, or is it?
No, it's the first time for you to consider it.
And so, before we publish it, I just, I have a couple of questions. I want to make sure that it's clear, and that the public, you know, I don't know, JD and Tom, you have questions on what you just heard.
Yeah, I do. I think the proper process would be moved to adopt, then have discussion, and go from there.
Then clean up the, if there's comments that need to change it.
And really, we would be adopting the first reading, is that correct?
If it's adopted, if you need some.
I mean, the motion would be to adopt.
Yeah, for the first reading, okay.
Does that obligate, just before you do that? So if we do have something that's significant, that we need to correct, that that's okay to do, right?
But then we probably, if it's substantial, we probably need to, you know, continue this for a first reading again.
Right.
Right.
But we could come back to.
Right, yes.
Just so we can open the discussion. Why don't I go ahead, and I'll move that we adopt the first reading of ordinance number 19-01 as just read by legal counsel.
Okay, I'll second it, too.
We're moving to second, and to adopt first reading of ordinance 19-01. Discussion, Commissioner?
As read.
Now we can adjust it. Just a couple of questions, and then we can decide whether we do anything. We'll make sure the penalties are stiff enough.
That's, that's the maximum penalty for us to have it as an ordinance. If the penalties get stiffer than that, we don't have the authority. We'd have to treat it as a class-two petty offense.
Okay, that helps. The other question was, we defined what we said private grow criteria are. We never said we would not allow commercial.
That's already established.
That was an ordinance back in 2013 that prohibited commercial.
So we're letting that previous, let's see, you're implying we're changing that ordinance previously to this new?
Well, no.
Or is it in addition to? I know it's different. It said there'd be no commercial.
The third whereas says, which really says we're acknowledging, right?
Okay, that.
That ordinance 13-01, uh, by the Board of Commissioners, commercial marijuana operations were prohibited.
And that's, we have to have in the actual body of this, that you were changing that, this just acknowledging that we already.
See, I was worried that when you read this, it tells you what you can do, and so that eliminated by process of elimination. Didn't hear anything about, uh, commercial.
That's already done.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's cited in this document as well.
So when we have a public, when it's published, they don't have the purview of seeing, well, they see this.
They'll see it.
That's, okay, good. The other one was, uh, I know why the number of plants, it went from six to 12, and everybody said, whoa, that's more. But then it limited, in that discussion, the kinds of use.
Well, it used to be six per person. If you had five adults living in one residence.
Then everybody could have it, so you could have 50 plants in one residence.
And here, it's a total of 12, no matter how many people are living in one residence.
And those people had to be age 21 or over, correct?
Yeah, in both cases, I think. So I wanted to make sure, see, if you read this, it's a little confusing. And it, it says the right, six marijuana plants for personal use, and also supersedes statutory grant, uh, to write to grow 12.
What page is it on there?
On, uh, three.
12 per household?
Yeah, see, at any given time, no more than 12 marijuana plants in any stage of growth may be cultivated. We're allowing them to grow 12, and da-da-da-da-da-da, of 21 persons, and said, the limitation is based upon.
If I, if I can help you, if one person lives in the residence, we're increasing the amount of plants they could grow out.
Right.
But if we have a husband and wife, for example, then it's the same amount, wouldn't it? But if they have children over 21, or guests in their house, that's what we're cutting down, so.
Well, to me, I, I hear you, and that, I, that's good. I'm just a little worried, after hearing Shannon talk about the six plants that were nine feet tall, and we're increasing the number from, to, that they could have, they're nine feet tall, it's 12.
Just one person living in a house, though, right?
No, we're giving it 12. That, you see?
But it says 12 per how, per residence, and the previous was six per person.
Right.
So if you have five people, you could have 30 plants.
Yeah, I get that.
So if you have one person.
Doesn't affect us.
Can they have six?
12.
12. They can have 12.
Yeah. It does, this doesn't apply to that specific example. As Jay indicated, if there's two people in there, this doesn't apply. It's only if there's more than that.
See, to me, that kind of opens the door for the one guy. This is what went through my mind. The one guy now has the ability to grow more in a residence than he did before. If he's a single, if he's only, the only resident in a house by himself, he can now increase his grow operation to 12.
No, it wa, not increase it to 12, it was 12.
Oh, wait a minute.
It's on some books right now that it's 12.
I have to reverse it, you're right.
So, it's not going to affect one or two.
So if he's single, he could have less.
He could have less, but he can't have any more than 12, by statute.
Okay, all right, I'm, I'm good with that.
And then the other thing there.
I was looking at it the other way.
That I was going to say is that this limitation supersedes the provision that grants each person 21 years of age or older the right to grow six. That's what the, really, the guts of this is all about. So, um, good points. Okay, I had a couple of questions, if you're done, sir.
Yeah, it's all big and gaudy.
Um, on section three, subparagraph A, on page three, um, I, I got a little confused here. Marijuana may only be grown, cultivated, or processed as an accessory use at each, or, sorry, at the primary residence of the person engaging in such activity, and only one for such person's own consump, for consumption. Only one what is my question there, sir? I got a little fuzzy.
What page was that, Tom?
Page three, section three, subparagraph A.
Okay.
One is just, there's one and two, which is designating growing for two different purposes. An individual growing for his own consumption and use, or the number two is, a person growing as a primary caregiver.
Those uses, number one use, number two use, thank you. Okay, yeah, makes sense. And then on section four, uh, subparagraph, no, I'm sorry, just on section four, marijuana plant limits. Um, I think maybe I was going to follow up with Commissioner Candace's thought. It had to do, oh, no, I didn't. It had to do with something different. So I get it, that no more than 12 plants may be grown, or at any stage of maturity, may be grown, cultivated, or processed. So regardless of what stage in this grow process, they can't have 12 growing, and 12 over here being processed. It's all-inclusive, no more than 12.
Yeah.
And so if sheriff department rolls onto a piece of property, and they've got marijuana bagged up, and there's 12 marijuana plants growing, that's against the law.
Correct. Well, if you say bagged up, that they've processed.
See, this says processed, not.
But I don't, I think once it's processed and bagged, it's impossible to determine how many plants you're talking about there.
Which would be my question.
Then you're looking at a quantity, which is addressed in the statute.
What's the quantity?
The quantity that they're possessing.
Yeah, what, what are they allowed, even a couple of ounces or so? I don't remember what it is.
I think you can allow to have no more than an ounce for personal use on you at the time.
So, so if they cultivated it, gosh, so they can only cultivate two ounces at a time, so why would they need 12 plants?
No, it's on their person, is the statute, correct? You don't have one ounce on your person.
Well, not necessarily on their person, in possession. You know, if they had it in their residence, there's, I think it's, it may be more than an ounce, but if, if the sheriff went in for some reason and found that they had already had a lot of processed marijuana there.
Yeah, that's, that's a good question, because you could.
You could end up having a pound of processed marijuana.
And you've got bags of marijuana.
So that's what I'm wondering.
That's a separate state crime, if you, so.
Because we're talking about growing, really.
Growing, cultivating, or in the process.
And, and in, or processing of marijuana. So I maintain, I could be processing a pound of marijuana and still have 12 plants growing.
This ordinance just regulates the number of plants.
Okay.
Well, how do you, then how do you handle that they, they're bagging it, and they could have hundreds of bags?
Well, then, then you look at the, the state statute that addresses the quantity of the product that they possess.
Okay, so what is that, Mark?
The same here, but it's not a whole lot. I mean, if they had a half a pound of marijuana, or a pound of marijuana, they're in violation of their.
Which begs the question, why 12 plants, you know? We've got a limited amount.
Well, we can't limit it any more than, well.
This is what, this is what the state statute allows us to do now.
That's crazy.
Which was, came up because of the problem that did occur. You'd go in, and somebody said, I'm a primary caregiver, and they're growing, you know, 100 plants in there, because they have patients they're growing for. They can't do that anymore, now it's 12 max.
Right. I just, I wonder about the language here, number one, and what the intent is, if, how are we going to separate out the number of plants growing if we're going to consider processing as part of this ordinance?
Based on this ordinance, we just look at the number of plants growing. One of the issues that we've come up before is, they talk about mature plants. So they got 20 plants growing, six are mature, that.
Yeah, that, that helps that.
And then the rest, so they're, they're processing those, you know, months later.
Right.
So this is, addresses the number of plants.
Then do we need this statement, I really like, at any stage of maturity, may be grown or cultivated, but I, I guess my question is, or processed?
That's why I have liked the word processed, because a deputy could walk in, or the sheriff could walk in, and there's 14 plants already been pulled out of the ground, waiting to be chopped up, or whatever, however you make it into marijuana, you know, smokeable marijuana. So that, it's not growing, it's not cultivating, it's pulled out of the ground now, and we're getting ready to do something to it to make it into a usable product. So I don't see a problem with processing.
And this language actually tracks the language of the state statute that allows us to impose this.
Because if we didn't have something, your point's well taken. They could have, if they had 14 plants, it'd be, but they could have 10 pulled out, waiting, hanging upside down, drying.
Two sitting there.
And then 12 growing.
You know, they do it upside down to dry. Been on a marijuana bust with the cops, huh?
That is, sorry.
Yeah.
The main point of this is limiting from everybody, five, five adults.
Six per person.
Getting six, to.
Six.
Max of two people in the house having six.
And if I can answer that, your points well taken, but here's the issue that comes up all the time. 10 people say, I live in that residence, and they may spend one night there a month.
Oh, yeah.
And then they try and circumvent the law by saying, well, I'm entitled to my plants, let's put it in.
Yeah, I just want to be able to put it in a sentence that makes sense.
It really does change it from six per person to 12 per household, per resident. That's it.
Primary residence, really.
Who knows how many people are in that house? What's the definition? I mean, if you spend two nights a month there, I mean, I just don't know, this makes perfectly good sense.
I have another, uh, point I want to bring up before this goes to a vote. And this may be my mistake, it may be my clerical issue here, but I want to ask Ms. Brenda, because in my board packets, I have, uh, 12-5 board packet.
Ordinance 1901.
1901.
That was a, we thought that the tampering ordinance was going to be passed in 2019, but it actually ended up passing in 2018, so we changed it back to 1801.
Okay, I just didn't get it changed in my board packet.
Right, yeah. It was in that, and I saw that, too, and that's why I said 12-5, because I saw it was 1901, but it was actually 1801.
And we did second reading on tampering, and that resolution, that ordinance was passed. So that, it was just, I didn't change that in my board packet. And then obviously, the marijuana ordinance that we're considering, 1901 is correct and not in a conflict.
Right.
Thank you. Anything else, gentlemen?
If I may, just for a moment, this term of, the sheriff has that both towns be involved in this, too. This will come up for a vote on February 5th for West Cliff. And, um, highly plagiarized, but not the same. But, um, council has written, uh, just made it more generic for West Cliff as opposed to County.
And you say coming up first vote on the first reading? Or coming up for a vote on the first reading? They're going to go through two readings as well?
Correct.
And I'm assuming Silver Cliff does the same, two readings?
I would assume that's, I think that's probably statutory for municipalities, that they need to do that.
It is. Further discussion? Thank you, sir, appreciate that.
Just to beat a dead horse a little bit, um, this, we, we were bank, we're putting, the counties were given the right, or the authority for health and safety reasons to change, to, to deal with this legalized marijuana. So what ma, what do we determine is the health? I mean, is it six plants or 12? Uh, I mean, what, or is it less than six?
Well, the state constitution won't allow us to go lower than six.
Okay, so, so they determine somehow, but that, from a healthy point of view, is not going to.
It's a constitutional right to have a whole bunch of plants.
Yeah. And then obviously, it's, the onus is on the sheriff's department to track and monitor.
And that Shannon wanted this, just because of the abuse that's going on with the people who are allegedly growing for personal use, or as primary caregivers, when he knows it's a commercial operation.
Initially, they had to show, the grower had to show the medical marijuana license for each of his patients, regardless of how many it was.
And I'm going to put myself in Shannon's boots, and the deputies that go out on these buses. So you'll walk in there, and you find the six plants they're allowed, or the 12 if it's a residence. And yet, there's a bale of dry marijuana there. You're telling me that you can act on the dry marijuana?
Right.
Yeah, just fine. And to, down to what level would you accept arguing with a residence by saying, hey, I didn't say I couldn't have a bag? What, what is that?
It would be a quantity, and I have to.
Okay, as long as there's something that you can specifically act on.
Yeah, there's a defined quantity in the statute.
So that's a different animal than what we're dealing with here. Originally, I didn't think so, I thought, oh, wait a minute.
Now, the state criminal code regulates 99% of marijuana.
What you can have in your house. What you can have in your house.
Allowing this.
Okay. Further discussion? Public comment?
Just a question. Does growing it to sell it make it then commercial?
Yes.
And that's a horse of a different color?
Totally different.
This is for personal use.
Okay. Got it, thank you.
Who was the second on that?
I did.
Well, that was...
Yeah. Hey, woke up, that was a big deal, because I'll tell you what, we get a lot of comments on, "Don't let marijuana in the county."
You're paraphrasing very politely from what I heard.
And this will be on the website, yes, so that people can see it?
Since it's going to, will this go to paper of record?
Needs to be.
Yes, it has to be published twice, but I think it would be a good idea to put it on the website.
No reason why not.
Consider that done.
Is it 1801 on the website?
I think we did, yeah.
I will put that in my article then.
Good point.
It will be there for them to see.
Okay. Further discussion? Or further public comment, sorry? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All in favor of approving the first reading of ordinance 19-01 pertaining to the growing of marijuana in Custer County? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose nay. Motion carries. Thank you. Got some clarification there on some stuff that I was not very clear on.
Good job.
Next item of business is the annual operating plan, yes, thank you, sir.
And don't do any more ordinances for another year.
Yeah.
When I had to read the one on the open burdening, ordering ordinance, it was like 12 or 15 pages long. It just wore me out.
Does it have to be read by one person?
No, anybody could read it.
So you could pass it over?
Could take turns reading it.
Sure we could, I could read a page.
You could have Jeff.
Yeah, look at Jackie had to read.
Oh, God, yeah. Uh, next item of business, annual operating plan for the Colorado Division of Fire Prevention and Control. We've had this document in front of us. I personally attended the meeting when Joe Lobiondo brought us up to speed on a few changes. There wasn't anything real significant. Some of the changes he brought before the CES group had to do with some altitude on MMA flight operations. Those changed a little. Then I believe there were some frequency changes on page 30 of 31. There were, you can see those in red. Other than that, it was pretty much similar to what it was. So I will move we adopt the annual operating plan for Custer County. And forward that on to CDFPC.
Jay, you can...
Is it a second? Thank you. I'm moving a second to adopt the annual operating plan for Custer County.
Yeah, I had a question on, it says annual operating plan, that means a lot of things to a lot of different people. Okay, we ought to spe, uh, specify, specify what it's for, really. It's for the annual operating plan for fire.
For the Department of Fire.
Well, it's through the Division of Fire Prevention and Control. Correct. It's for Custer County.
For Custer County.
Yes. It really would be the Custer County Fire Safety Annual Operating Plan. I mean, there's, it's not safety, it's how we...
Wildland Fire Management.
It's how we manage.
But you really will take it, because it doesn't specify what it's for, it just says operating plan. It could be anything, so...
It's for the Fire Management Annual Operating Plan, it's called.
Yeah.
Wildland Fire Management.
Yeah. Yeah, the preamble of that document, it's not in the title, but it is in the preamble. It's Colorado Statewide Wildland Fire Management Annual Operating Plan.
Joe, what works for them, right?
Yes.
Colorado?
Yep.
The feds were on vacation.
Difficult to read.
Yes. Yeah, there's a lot of stuff in there. It, and this really, this document dictates how we're going to function in the event we get a wildland fire, and who's responsible for what, who's going to pay for what. So I think it's an important document. Joe Lobiondo obviously recommended highly that we adopt this.
And who from the county helped him? Just for the record.
Cindy Howard, Fire Chief, shy.
Is this an annual?
Yes.
Good. Okay.
Further discussion? We can change the name of it right now, if we want to.
We should.
We can change that name to be the Custer County Wildland Fire Annual Operating Plan.
I would recommend doing that, just so we don't get confused with anything else.
Restate the motion.
So let's look at page five, real quick, and that's where the preamble is. Instead of Colorado statewide, would you guys be comfortable with calling this the Custer County Wildland Fire Management Annual Operating Plan? Because to me, that's what it really is.
To me, I think it makes much more sense.
I would move that we amend, amend this document. We'll come back, because I know we have a motion on the table.
Right, it does say Custer County. Just put the...
To amend this document, actually, to be technically correct.
Have another motion if we want on the floor.
And you made that motion, Jay?
You did.
Oh, I did?
What you would draw?
Jay seconded it.
Exactly where I was headed. I would draw my motion, and second withdrawn.
I'll second the withdrawal.
Bill, you seconded that motion, correct? Do you withdraw your second?
Yes.
So now we'll start over.
Good.
Sheriff would entertain a motion to amend this document.
I move that we amend the document presented to us originally titled the 2019, let me get back here, Custer County Annual Operating Plan, and change the, to change the title to read, let me get back here, the 2019 Custer County Annual Fire Management.
Sorry. You stuck word annual in there, and it's later.
I'm sorry?
Okay.
Okay.
So 2019.
Colorado.
Okay, we're going to put Custer County.
Custer County State Wildlife Fire Management Annual Operating Plan.
Management, I'm changing my document as we do that.
Custer County State?
Custer County.
Statewide?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No.
Custer County.
Wildlife Fire.
Wildland Fire Management Annual Operating Plan.
Okay, good, that's like that.
2019.
Management.
I'll second.
Okay, I think I have...
I'll read it again. So it's been moved and seconded to amend this document by adding the, we're actually adding the words, Custer County Wildland Fire Management, so that it would read 2019 Custer County Wildland Fire Management Annual Operating Plan.
Correct.
The amendment is only on Custer County Wildland Fire Management. Discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All in favor of the amendment? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose nay? Motion carries. Now I would move that we adopt the 2019 Custer County Wildland Fire Management Annual Operating Plan.
Second.
Moving seconded to adopt the 2019 AOP. Further discussion? Public comment? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose nay? Motion carries.
Geez, that was painful.
Yes, that was. Yes, that was. Next item of business is the approval of the final draft of the statement of opposition on behalf of the Custer County Board of Commissioners pertaining to Upper Arkansas Water Conservancy District's proposed augmentation plan. You gentlemen, give me just a second, I'm trying to find that document.
While you're doing that, why did that come up? I thought we did it.
We, no, you authorized me to draft one. I sent those drafts to you, and it was on the agenda to finalize that today. I've got, I don't know why it's going on, I have a poor document.
Kind of strange.
Because I think you sent it after I sent out the order, I think.
So let me pull that.
So is that, is that on the statement of opposition?
It's the 13119 draft statement of opposition. I emailed that out. It shouldn't be that document.
It's this one here, isn't it?
Let me look at that one, make sure it's the...
It should be, because it's got this...
Yeah, I took the draft watermark off of that. I would move that we approve this statement of opposition on behalf of the...
And I'll second that one.
Custer County Board of Commissioners. Moving to seconded to submit this statement of opposition on behalf of the Board of County Commissioners. Certainly, I think there would probably be other reasons, but I don't know that we need to beat a dead horse there with trying to make up a bunch of spiffy language just to include in this. They would have accepted this, certainly with the number one on there, but for the public record, if you gentlemen don't mind, I would like to read the reasoning, the facts as to why the application should not be granted. The Board of Custer County Commissioners oppose the Upper Arkansas Water Conservancy District's application for water augmentation plan for Custer County, case number 2018 CW3076, for the following reasons. Number one, we hold the applicant to strict proof of details in the application. Number two, the proposed blue line is very arbitrary and difficult, if not impossible, to define as to the actual boundaries of said blue line. Number three, we believe the potential injury to existing water rights is significant if augmentation is allowed. Number four, we believe that the Upper Arkansas Water Conservancy District filed this, the proposed application, knowing that the citizens of Custer County had no input, nor would they support such an augmentation plan. Number five, we believe the language in attachment A indicating all or part of a given section of land in the legal descriptions is ambiguous and misleading. So those were the five reasons.
And the attachment is the map, right?
Um, yeah, the attach, I should have maybe, and we still can specify that in, in attachment A of the proposed application, because you, the way it's written, you would think it's here.
You think it's attached.
So if you don't mind, I'm going to change that. So number five, we believe the language in attachment A of the...
Proposed augmentation.
Yes, thank you, sir, I appreciate that.
Okay.
Of the proposed, okay? Yeah. UAWCD application, correct?
Right. Previously submitted. Did we make it very clear what we're objecting to? I think it's very important.
And now I just got to make sure that the language structure is correct there.
Cool.
So we believe the language in attachment A of proposed UAWCD application previously submitted indicates, or indicating is still, I think, correct, don't you? Indicating all or part of a given section of land in the legal description is ambiguous.
Yes.
I think indicating instead of indicates.
It'll work.
I'll have to clean that up a little bit, because my word is, it's all over the place.
Okay, so I have a little problem.
Okay, go ahead.
With number three.
Uh-huh.
The we is us, this is just me speaking.
Correct.
Believe a potential injury to existing water rights is significant if augmented. We don't know that for truth, because we've never been presented anything.
Correct, that's why we said, no.
Maybe, maybe.
No, I think if we could, it could be, we don't, we don't know. This is saying, we, we see potential, and just, we have enough information to say that what they do, we have implemented, and so they're, we don't, they've never presented anything. I'm not an engineer, but an engineer would speak to us.
But we share story, believe to, we are, we are concerned.
That there may be injury.
We are concerned that the blue line is very arbitrary and difficult.
Yeah.
No question in my mind that I believe that that injury exists.
Yeah, that's a fine, but it doesn't mean...
We've got to agree, the three of us, because we're all going to sign it.
See, because I don't know what, what, specifically what that does, when they move the blue line, and if they move some water, blah, 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 who does that, and they've never presented how it is, how it works, how, you know, enough for us to make that. But they give us enough concern that this, that is a potential problem.
I get your point. I'm with Tom on this. We do believe that there was a reason that we heard enough during that meeting from the people who own water rights saying, "We believe that if this goes through, it's going to hurt us," and therefore, I believe them.
Well, but what I heard, though, by same, same meeting, I heard there was, that they didn't, the people that were there, how do I know this doesn't affect me? It's downstream, in theory, to the guys, some of the guys that were there, on that side of the blue line, you know? So I think it's more accurate to say that, that it, that significant augmentation, this is, is significant, could be significant, but we don't know, because they, they didn't give us the hearing. We never had it.
Well, you're right, and we don't know that. That's why I put the words, "we believe." Now, this was written on behalf of all of us, so we have to agree.
Could be, or, or we don't have enough information to determine it, and it's significant enough that they better show us.
So that's why I worded it, the potential injury, we're not saying we know it. We can say we suspect...
We believe the potential existing is significant, we, we just don't know.
Maybe.
It could be, it could be even pre...
Instead of is, maybe we should say maybe significant.
That's right, it may be.
But because the word is means we know.
Yeah, we know, we got the information that's designed it.
Are you good at, sir, that may be?
Doesn't change the fact that it could...
Significant augmentation is allowed.
Yeah, is, I, I missed that word is, you're exactly right.
That's my point, was making the...
So maybe significant if augmentation is allowed. And, and I just want to, let me save that, so I don't goof that up. And then I want to backtrack to just one thing you said, I'm not trying to be behind here. You said move the blue line, it, there's no blue line now.
Whatever it is, implement the blue line.
They're going to implement it.
That's right, implement the blue line.
They're not going to try to move it.
That's true.
I suspect that's such...
There was always somebody saying, "Oh, this is the blue, it moved," then, you know?
Yeah. Um, so...
It moved to the county.
My personal feeling is eventually they're going to want to come back and expand that blue line, which would not really be moving.
Well, that's what they just did, they took it out of the Arkansas Valley and put it into us.
It's just terrible what they did.
But without talking to us.
Okay, so number three then I've got, we believe the potential injury to existing water rights may be significant if augmentation is allowed.
There you go, that's better, that's much better written.
Okay. And then, number five, just again to repeat, we believe, because we're all going to sign it, so, we believe the language in attachment A of the proposed application previously submitted indicating all or part of a given section of land in the legal descriptions is ambiguous and misleading.
Nobody could explain that.
Right. And the...
Would you want to just, just, I'm not trying to beat this to death.
Go ahead, no, we...
But what we said, the description is, we have ambiguous and misleading. Did you want to add the, the word arbitrary also?
Appreciate it. It was ambiguous.
Yeah, yeah, that's...
Arbitrary is, yeah.
You know, the whole point is, we could have just said...
We don't know why the heck they did this. We have no idea.
Right.
And I'll be darned if they can come tell us truthfully why they did it. I think I know why they did it. Is it true? Now, I don't know if this is true, no, that's a rumor, I don't want to go there.
Um, yes, I agree. I, I have no problematic in the word arbitrary there, do you, Bill?
No.
So indicating all or part of a given section of land in the legal descriptions is ambiguous, arbitrary, and misleading, and if you looked at those, gentlemen, I don't think anything could be further from the truth.
No.
It's a helter-skelter, I mean, they have a reason, but they haven't shared that It's a helter-skelter, I mean, they have a reason, but they haven't shared that with...
And that's the whole key to this thing.
Well, and the other thing, too, to me, is we're paying money to be part of a co-op, it's a water cooperative here, and the reason that that's good, from my point of view, is that it allows more money to be spent to fight things that we don't have the money to pay for, if it's for the right reasons.
But I think the most telling thing on all of this is that two representatives from Custer County that were there, they didn't catch it.
Ran right over the top of it.
They were excluded from the decision-making process.
Nobody ever even...
This was done behind their back, and I'll tell you, I'm just, this is so...
And, oh, by the way, probably other board members that were there.
I don't know, then may or may not, then other board members who knew what was going on, but the two that...
I don't think Manny...
The two that represent us, they were not, they had no idea what was going on.
Well, and I think technically, back to your point, we can say there were two that did not know. Manny never said in that public meeting that he wasn't aware of it, he said it privately, but he never said it in the meeting, so, and he didn't say it to all three of us either, but...
I heard from Mr. Doc.
Mardell DiDomenico indicated that we all three have to agree to the language, because we're all three going to sign it. She said, "If you wanna sign individually, if you have different feelings about it, you can submit individually."
For $110.
For $192. So that's why I wanna take time to make sure we're all in agreement.
That's why we gotta make sure we're...
Because we're signing it that we all three agree to the wording in this document. And then, so that you know, I've indicated on this application that we will send a copy of this to Kendall Bergermeister, the UAWCD attorney, and that's by law, we have to do that.
So in the interest of nitpicking, then take a look at item one on your thing.
Okay.
So we object, and it just makes a statement, and I'm not sure it's, it's, "We hold the applicant to strict proof of details in the application." Well, what we're really saying is, proof of what?
Everything in that application.
Right. But that's the, I'm just trying to figure out how to say it.
Okay, let me interject real quick, because it may alleviate your feeling. That's quote-unquote from the water court, those words. I didn't make those up.
That's what she said, you had to have it there.
Include the following wording.
You had to have that, okay, so that, okay, we object.
We're objecting to this.
Let's see, that's not a reason, you see what I'm saying?
Yeah, I do.
We, maybe the statement should be in that, up above, it says, "And we hold the applicant to strict proof of details in the application, the Board of County Commissioners oppose that, for these following reasons."
Okay, how about if we do this, that we oppose the statement up there? And hold the applicant to strict proof. But she told me...
That's not a reason.
Well, she told me that is your primary reason for opposing. She said, "If nothing else, you have to oppose..."
Okay, that's fine.
She said, "If you're gonna oppose it, that needs to be one of the reasons."
Right, she's saying that, read number two, if there's this state facts, the application should not be granted, or why it should be granted only in part. And then, in that, so the first statement is, we oppose it, the board, we want, in order to, we demand that they hold the applicant to strict proof of details for the application, and then for the following reasons, blah, blah, blah.
Okay, then that does not become a reason, that's part of a statement of oppositions. I don't know, she just said, she said, "Really, your first reason should be that you want to hold", and maybe we should put, "We want to, or we desire to hold".
I think it's fine, I mean, I'm...
You wanna leave it like that, as long as it comes across it, because...
And I only put it in it because that's exactly what she told me to write.
I see, I'm just trying to figure out how to say it.
Deviate what she told you to write.
Right.
Well, that's, let's see, when you start off, the Board of County Commissioners, "Hold the applicant to..." Me enter, okay.
She said, "That is a reason to oppose, is because you want to hold them to their strict proof of what's in that application."
Out of curiosity, has anybody heard from Mr. Sondhoff since we started this process?
The other thing, I did a little more research.
Somebody had a meeting, didn't they, didn't you, Tom?
No, no. That this, this is, and it says it on here, and I went back and looked, in the second box of this application, concerning the application for water rights, this is actually an application for them to get additional water rights. Nobody wants to talk about that.
I'm sorry, but I'm not fine.
The wording, can you scroll up? Those two words right there are of huge importance for people to know and understand, that this is actually an application for additional water rights for Upper Arkansas. They do say it down deep in the document, and that they will be allowed to increase their water right holdings in Custer County. Which really, in my mind, should be the title of this. This is an application for water rights and to extend a blue line for water augmentation.
I can kinda see it, it's, they're asking if they buy water rights, they're asking, that's what they could do, that's what they're doing, they wanna go and...
Buy water rights within this proposed blue line.
Up in Custer County, put in a reservoir up above, you know, whatever, so they're asking if you can change it.
No, no, I don't, that's the document, it was just, I wanted to just point out that it was an application for water rights.
It is for water right now.
Yeah, exactly, that's my point, that's really what it's for. I'm good with moving on, yeah. Any further discussion, public comment?
I have a question.
Yes?
Is this water augmentation plan a wholly new plan, or is it an amendment to an existing plan?
This is a whole new application for an augmentation plan.
Okay, so we also, we already have, I think I may have misstated...
Custer County has an augmentation plan, it started back in the 70s.
There are several, right?
We have eight.
Okay, so this is just a new one that they are applying?
Yes, this is another.
That will change some lines?
Right. Not change some lines, we'll implement some lines, because there are no lines.
Okay, thank you, because I think I may have misstated that in my...
Yeah, there are no water augmentation plans within that area right there. If there were, then this would be an amendment to one of those, but it's not, this is a new one. That red line is what this document refers to as blue line, it's just he used red ink instead of blue.
It's hard to see the red from where you're at, but it's there.
So, really, it encompasses, I think it's fair to say, the north-central one-third of the county. Or north-central portion of the county, one-third is kind of ambiguous, but, yeah, to answer your question, this is a new application.
Here up, you see where the red line is?
And there are existing eight already.
Yes, ma'am, that's according to our water commissioner, District 13 Water Commissioner.
See, when they went through the zoning, Jackie, and they started it.
Further discussion? Hearing none will proceed to vote, all in favor of submitting the proposed statement of opposition printed, say aye.
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 With changes?
With, as amended, thank you, yes, as amended, because you do not have those in front of you, do you? Okay, let me restate my motion. I move to submit the statement of opposition with the changes that we agreed to this morning.
Perfect.
Will this be available on the website?
Yes.
For citizens to see?
Yeah. It needs to be, in my opinion.
Just this, this, yeah, this not...
Through the discussion?
It's easy, it's not a...
Hearing none, proceed to vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose nay, motion carries. You're welcome, thank you, guys. And then, what this really does, of course, you guys know this, but for the record, that this is going to enable us to receive every document that's filed in the court pertaining to this water augmentation plan.
Yeah, no, it doesn't mean that we're withdrawing from the Upper Ark or anything like, it just means we're contesting it, we can agree as it evolves.
Is that something, and that might be overwhelming, but is that something that, since you're doing this on behalf of the citizens, seems like this should also give access to the citizens of all that court documentation? Or is that impossible?
Well, I'd have to check with council about that, the only way that would happen would be if we posted it on the website. Everything we got, we reposted, and I'm not sure that would be...
Or, or we could keep a file somewhere, because these are all public documents, and we don't do any, I close doors. So we could just put in, say, you could go to the clerk, whatever office, is what I meant, somebody's office, if you'd like to read the documents, they'll be available during normal business hours, and then give a location, I have no issue with that, because there may be a lot, I mean, anytime there's a lawsuit, which is what this basically is gonna be, there's gonna be a lot of documentation, I'd rather just say, you know, "You're welcome to view them any time."
Well, I have a hunch it's all gonna be electronically transferred.
Well, yeah, it won't, that would mean you'd have to print it, that would be silly, maybe somebody could come in with a jump drive and say, "I'd like to have all that". Well, just think about it, because, you know, if you're doing this on our behalf, then maybe, I mean, there are citizens out there that this affects, that will want to be in on that and not pay $197.
Well, yeah, now, technically, we are, as representatives of the county citizenry, we did this on our behalf. If anybody else wants to do it, they're gonna have to do that themselves, but to get them access to the information was your point, right? And we haven't filed really on behalf of the citizens.
I don't know the legalities of that or anything, it's just something that I was thinking, I wonder if, who will be able to see that besides you?
I think anybody can see it, whatever we have.
Maybe, and her points we'll take, maybe if it comes electronically, email it to anybody who makes requests to have the documents emailed.
Have Brennan set up a link, and then go down one of them.
That'd be fine, too.
Yeah, our, I agree 100%, our biggest problem is making people aware that they can do that and that information somewhere. That's what my hang's there on this whole process, that's why we're having these meetings.
So, once this information starts coming in, if you guys would discuss that so that I can report that, so that people will know how to get it?
Yeah, great.
We'll bring it up, and help us with that.
Ms. Brennan, I just sent that to you. So if we can print that out, sign it today, then we'll get it in the mail.
And I guess sort of a method, you're the member ex officio on the board, and this process is gonna go on, I think you just make announcements every once in a while, this report on what's going on.
Right, yeah, it's a good point. The next meeting for Upper Ark's February 14th.
Keeps it in front of the citizens. Tell you what, there's not just about any landowner if he doesn't know what's going on.
Well, I would agree that most of the water right users, I'm not sure...
Land, I don't mean land, well, then, somebody wants to do something with their land.
I would request, gentlemen, that we all three consider attending that meeting for Upper Ark on the 14th, starts at 1:00 P.M. I just think initially here, it would be good for us to do that, maybe subsequent meetings not necessary, but... When I get the agenda from Kimberly, their secretary, I will forward that on to you so you can consider whether or not you wanna attend that meeting. Okay, February 14th, 1:00 P.M.? All right, next item of business, thank you, gentlemen, we'll, we're gonna get that printed out and sign that before we leave today, so we can get that in the mail. And...
That's validized.
I know, for transparency, also let me explain that the filing fee of $192 was pulled out of community outreach.
Community outreach, that's what I mentioned earlier today.
Okay, next item of business is the Upper Ark Council of Governments Recycling Agreement. What's the group's pleasure?
I move that we accept the Upper Arkansas Area Council of Government Agreement dated January 22nd, 2019, regarding the recycling program in Custer County.
Been moved and seconded to adopt the Upper Arkansas Area Council of Governments Recycling Agreement that we have in front of us. Let me finish that real quick here, we'll get this taken care of.
While you're doing that, I'll just mention that Rusty at the landfill and his comrades over there have done an excellent job on recycling revenues are up. And we have a lot more to sell as time goes on, so we're doing a big job, Custer County's done a great job in recycling.
Counsel, if you could take a quick look at this, this is a certificate of service dictating who we're gonna send a copy of that to, and there's a signature line at the bottom of that, I'm assuming that as chair, that would be appropriate for me to sign that. And then we have to also, Kelly, have this notarized.
Okay.
You're good with us signing it here? Nice.
Sure. That'll cost me.
Yeah, we're gonna have to pay extra for the notary.
I need to see some IDs, too.
Yeah, I'll show you some IDs. Might be scary, but...
You charging for a note?
So, we'll go through the notary thing, I'll find a mailing a copy of this, but...
What do you mean?
First page. And then maybe, wanna do this after the meeting, now?
Probably after, I guess I'll get mine. Is it a notary, or am I just...
I believe it's notaries.
Yeah, I think it is.
Yeah, so I can book it, my book.
And then, we have to make sure we send a copy of this to their attorney, Ms. Brenda. So we're gonna mail two copies today, or mail the original and a copy, his address is on there. Kendall Bergermeister, we have to send Upper Arkansas a copy.
Okay.
I can get with you afterwards, too. I just wanna make sure that signature at the bottom is correct.
Want me to hand deliver it to the water court and throw it in the judge's face?
Yeah, no.
Well, I know Larry Schwartz pretty well.
You had said that, no, just in case he might say, "I don't know, these three yahoos".
What would be good is to get the timeline out of them somehow, so people are all worried about what...
Well, Mardell could answer that question, I don't know what...
Well, Mardell will have to tell us, but, you know, because there's gonna be an objection.
And we should get that now, I mean, if there is a timeline, this should...
So what do we do next, you know, how much time?
I believe we're in a motion here, sorry. Further discussion on the recycling agreement?
Yes, if I may? They're asking also for representative from the board, I have done that in the past, and if you're, if both of you would agree, I would be happy to stay on that. If you choose. That's the very end of the document.
Right, and then I was thinking, I'm pulling up another document while we're talking about that, that was recycling on here already.
Because I think you guys did that.
I did, too, that's what I was thinking.
I think I'm already on it, but I don't know if I'm the, with this document, if it needs to be a separate agreement or not.
Yeah, you are our appointee to that, so yes, I think that's been done, I'm, thank you for bringing it up, because I would have not paid attention to that. Yeah, so, and included in my motion then would be, Custer County appoints as their director to the advisory board of the Upper Arkansas, or Upper Ark Recycling Program, Jake Prince, we good there? Are you on that document, Ms. Brenda?
Which document?
Recycling Agreement, last page, I'm just asking, I heard you typing, so I just didn't know what you were doing.
No, I'm just gonna write it in. That's their document that they sent me, I don't have a Word document version of that document, that's just a, it's just a hard copy.
Because we've got it, digital.
It's a PDF.
Right, okay, still in PDF?
Yeah.
Thank you. Further discussion? Hearing none will proceed to vote, or public comment? I think I asked that once, but, hearing none will proceed to vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose nay, motion carries. So you'll handwrite in that information?
Yes.
And how many signatures?
Just yours.
Okay.
You have those hard copies in front of you, I believe.
Pardon?
You have those hard copies in front of you.
I'm still way behind, even on DFPC, crying out loud, we haven't done that. Making a lot of decisions, we just haven't been...
Ranchers' Rus', where the tourism workshop is.
No.
Highway 96.
Oh, that's right, Roadhouse.
Are you coming to the 2:00 meeting here today?
If I know what it is.
It's the housing study. Charles Vogel and I are on, and I think you're on it, too, they want us to get a citizen group together at 2:00.
I saw the email, but it was all tentative, so I didn't have it written down, so it is going on today.
Vogel and I are supposed to meet here at 2:00, and he was supposed to reach out to you.
He did not, I will be there. Well, this document said Custer County at the top, so I signed right below that, and now I see your little red sign right here.
Can she just print it up?
Yeah, I can just, what, which document is that?
AOP, Annual Operating Plan.
Yeah, I'll just print that page again.
Signature page, thank you, it's bio signature where I signed, so...
You are behind.
You're doing that again, aren't you?
We've been making decisions, but I haven't been keeping up with signatures, so... And they wanted two copies of the recycling agreement, so...
Yeah, there's two copies there that need to be signed.
And you'll fill in at the top then, the date and all that, or?
Yep.
So there's an attestation for you, well... So, there's an attestation for you, well.
I got that one. This is the one that she printed off, I think.
With the changes.
Yeah, that's probably the one that-
Ah, yeah, yeah, yeah. So, this one's go away.
Do you want to make sure that that has the- I think that's the one that she handed to you that- I handed you one. It was paper cut, so I don't- I don't know.
Let me just look here. May. Yes, this is no longer any good.
Okay.
And this one we have signed.
Yeah, I just have to know where it is.
Did Ms. Meredith tell us when she could start?
Okay, so, Commissioner, signature printed, signature printed. It looks a little weird, but-
Pull on the button. You're on the button. Yeah, long she get my name out.
I know. I'm struggling, sir. I am struggling in that area.
So, where's the-
I'll be counter-sued here.
Did Brenda only give you the signature?
Just the signature. And then, Ms. Brenda?
Yes.
And on the AOP, you're going to fill out- I mean, on the recycling agreement, you'll fill out that stuff. And at the top, there's a date. Thank you.
I have to return it up.
Okay.
Okay, let's move along, guys.
We're getting there, sir. Public comment? Yes, ma'am.
Don't harm feather me, but I have a question.
Okay.
In regards to the Tourism Board and Bob Swanson, that letter, even though the letter was set out and was voted, we have not voted on that aspect of it. I did approach Deb on it, and she said we would do that at a February 12th meeting, so I will certify. So, I just- you guys are so careful about trying to keep things open and on the up and up, you know? I just wanted to bring that up. We have not as a board even met. It's been emailed.
Right.
But legally, we have not.
And that needs to be done, that's for sure.
Right. So, I guess I would recommend that you guys put it on the agenda for the 20th of February, because our next meeting is the 12th of February.
Are you going to be at the workshop today?
We cannot legally do that.
I know. You have to discuss it.
And you're on the agenda for the 28th, I believe, Tourism Board?
I kind of left it from-
Yeah, I'm trying to look that up.
It was in the packet.
But it-
Yeah, yeah, but we hadn't voted on it. She-
If that's the case, you can't do that.
I thought we put it on for one of the- oh, it was the 5th, February 5th, and that will be before you have a meeting. So, we'll just deal with it. If the Tourism Board votes to recommend him to the commissioners, then I would assume the chairman would indicate that to us. We'll put it on the agenda after that.
Right. So, it's not on the 5th?
No, it's still on the 5th.
Still on the 5th. They just got-
But we can't let it- we're not-
I know, let's put it in.
What do you have on the 5th for tourism right now?
Add Tourism Board member Bob Swanson.
Okay, that won't- that has to come off.
Okay.
Time out. Why don't we just make this decision for them? I mean, we have the right to do that. Why don't we do- this is nonsense. Just leave it on the 5th. Let's vote it and move on. Tell them, "Sorry, you got a new member, whether you like it or not."
We can do that.
Can I say something in regards to that? When I did come before you at that time, when you guys said no, I think at that time you could have said, "We'd rather have him as and voted on it then."
Well, we did say we'd rather have, and we were going to leave it to the Tourism Board to make that decision.
Make sure you-
In my opinion, if they can't do it, I don't have a problem doing it, but I-
The point is that you all, as a group, need to agree that that was a viable candidate.
When Angie came here last time, she said, "We won't have another meeting," and you said, "You need to vote on it before we do it," so.
So, whenever they do it. I don't know what the rush is.
Well, no rush, just with Jay's comments, just getting old. But I think we still need to go through the process.
And I understand that we're dealing with somebody with some strong dynamics.
Well, people got to get used to working together, Angie.
Well, that's what I'm trying. I'm bringing the- I'm bringing copies of the Sunshine Lodge for the evening tonight, and hopefully explain that just because we have stuff in emails doesn't mean that it's an agreement legally that we have to vote on it.
That's true.
I would say the chairman of the Tourism Board needs to indicate that their board has voted to recommend him to us, and we'll move forward. That's my opinion.
Jack's got it.
Can a group like them put it in their bylaws that they can vote via email, or is that a state wheel?
It is. They're proposed bylaws. It's in there.
So, in the new- once those are passed, then they can. I see.
And basically, what we've done is if we stated at a meeting that we can vote via email, so that way the public knows that we're legally voting on something.
So, you can do that still.
Further public comment?
Oh, I have a question. I just sent you guys the schedule for the strategy stuff, so you got what I described.
Yes.
And there is no meeting on the 11th. That was a deliverable. The next meeting's on the 21st, but you got it in your computers.
I want Brenda to have it so I can get it from her, because I'm going to go with Brenda.
Okay. So, the 21st is when I-
Yeah, all that's coming is a draft document by the 11th. And then, on the 21st is the-
What time is that?
Task Force meeting at 2:00 to 5:00, and then, there's a task force meeting. Then, the 22nd is another task force meeting, Task Force 3. So, in February, there are two more meetings.
Two to 5:00, you said?
Yeah, two to 5:00.
21st.
And the other one's 11:01 on the 22nd.
And those are all where?
Task Force. And one of them's at Community. Let's see where it was. That's to be determined. Those are the task force meetings.
I'll pull it up off your email. Any further public comment? Anything, gentlemen? Without objection, the meeting is adjourned. Till 4:47.